If we could start with the introduction, please.
Thank you for joining us this evening for the March 7th, 2023 Montesorino City Council meeting. Before the meeting is called to order, I would like to point out a few house rules to assist council members, staff, and members of the public to successfully participate in this meeting. For tonight's meeting, Zoom is being used to allow public participation with this city council meeting. For those using Zoom to participate, there are two icons, that and raise hand. Please use chat only to report technical issues such as being unable to hear a council member speaking. Please use raise hand to be recognized by the mayor and unable to speak to the council. Only attendees using Zoom application can use the raise hand option to comment. Participants calling in from a telephone will only be able to listen and cannot provide feedback or comment. And last thing, when we are not all in the same room, all votes at this meeting must be taken by roll call.
Thank you. May we, before we have a roll call, or sorry, I'll say it differently. I will call the meeting of the March 7th, 2023 meeting of Monte Sereno City Council to order at 7:05. If we could get started by having the city attorney read the remote instructions, that would be good.
The city attorney or the city clerk?
Actually, if you could explain, I believe there's two members of city council that cannot attend tonight. If you could outline the exemption, please.
Yes, yes. So with respect to the new rules that have gone into effect under the Brown Act, now that the state of emergency has been rescinded by the governor, there are two exceptions which allow council members to appear remotely without following the traditional Brown Act rules of posting their location on the agenda. Those are the just cause exception, which allows a council member to appear by notifying the council that they are appearing for just cause. And I'm gonna bring, bring up the, the just cause exception really quickly. Under the just cause exception, you're allowed to participate remotely no more than two times per calendar year, if necessary, for childcare or caregiving need of a child parent, grandparent, grandchild, sibling spouse or domestic partner, or a contagious illness that prevents a member from attending in person or a need related to a physical or mental disability or travel while on official business. The other exception that allows council members to appear remotely is the emergency circumstances exception, which allows a council member to appear remotely when they have a physical or family medical emergency that prevents them from attending in person. Under the emergency circumstances exception, the council has to vote to approve the remote participation. However, that is not limited to two times per year. Basically, you are allowed to attend no more than remotely for no more than three consecutive months or 20% of regular meetings under the emergency circumstances and just cause exceptions combined. And every time that you would like to participate under either exception, the council needs to approve. Or at least either approve or be notified.
Thank you. As I understand it, council member Turner and vice mayor Wolchimer are not able to attend in person, but they're remote at the moment. And we've got two council members in chambers here, myself and council member Craig. And so I've called the meeting to order. Perhaps we should now do the pledge of allegiance. And we've got deputy fire chief Jason here, and I would ask that you lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
And mayor, just to be clear, I would recommend that each council member who is participating remotely state that they're either participating for just cause or for emergency circumstances because of the different rules that apply to each. And then if either council member states that they're here for, under emergency circumstances, I would recommend the council vote to approve their participation.
Okay, thank you. I see a car has just pulled into the parking lot. May we have a roll call vote, please? And if you were attended, attending remotely, please state the reason why.
So just to clarify, my understanding was we want to give first the floor to our remote council members. Is that correct, Sergeant, City Attorney? Or would you like, go ahead and do the roll call?
I think we can, we can, we can handle the remote meeting participation after the roll call, yes.
My apologies.
Council member Turner? You're on mute.
Here.
Council member Craig?
Here.
Council member Lockey?
Present.
Vice Mayor Wolchimer?
Present.
Mayor Mekachuk?
Present. I believe there's two council members that are remote. If you could state the reason why you're remote for the record, please.
Shall I start? I am attending by Zoom today for just cause in accordance with government code 54953, paragraph F, also paragraph J, section 2, a contagious illness that presents, that prevents a member from attending in person. Since this is a medical issue, I don't necessarily have disclosed what's going on, but I'll do it anyway. I was exposed to COVID over the weekend by a person who tested positive this morning, so I thought it was much better for me not to attend in person.
Thank you. Attorney Rudin, do we have to take a vote on whether?
No.
Oh, thank you.
Not under just cause.
Then we'll move to council member Turner. Go ahead, please.
Yes, I am not able to attend today because I injured my hip recently and I cannot stay in one position for a very long period of time. I need to be able to get up and move around and sometimes lie down. Because of that, I need to attend this meeting remotely. Sergio advised me that we are operating under new rules now and that remote attendance should be approved by the council. Therefore, I'm requesting that the council approve my remote attendance at this meeting and possibly through the end of the month. I'm not sure yet because there are days where I don't feel any pain and there are days where it gets so painful, just like yesterday and today. So I'm going for therapy and we'll be seeing the orthopedist again March the 24th.
Thank you. If you could do a roll call vote, please, and you can start with me.
Mayor Mekachuk?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wolchimer?
Yes.
Council member Lockey?
I assume this is all approving the, yes.
The participation.
Yes, yes.
Council member Craig?
Yes. Thank you. I hope you're feeling better.
I think we missed council member Turner.
Oh.
Maybe I should vote. No, no, just kidding. Yes.
Thank you. I guess I assume voting in favor of that. So hopefully you'll be feeling better and you can attend the next meeting. So with, with that, we've got a quorum and we've got three, three people in person in council. We've got orders of the day. Does anyone have any changes? Any council member have any changes to the orders of the day? Bearing none, we will proceed. We've got two presentations this evening. The first is a proclamation for the American Red Cross. And our full proclamation is in the agenda, but I will say that I do hereby proclaim March 2023 is Red Cross Month and I encourage all citizens of Monte Sereno to reach out and support the Red Cross's humanitarian mission. And I believe we've got a presentation. Now, thank you. And Mr. Torn, you're with the American.
I am Kent Torn. I'm the CEO of Red Cross Silicon Valley. And thank you so much for inviting me this evening. Thank you to Steve as well for his support for our programs. This is like coming home because this was the home of Red Cross, as, as most of you know, and so it's got a rich history with, with our organization. A lot of people think they know a lot about Red Cross, but there's a lot more than, that, that most people don't realize. We've been around, we're the old, one of the oldest, if not the oldest nonprofit in the United States, about 140 years. We were founded by Clara Barton, a very, very powerful and wonderful woman, nurse. And we have five lines of business, humanitarian services, disaster services. And I just want to point out our partners from the fire department. So when there's a home fire, for example, the fire department seems it necessary for Red Cross to come in and to offer services. And so we are very close partnerships with all the wonderful work of the heroes of our fire departments in this county. We have disaster services, training services, blood, which we'll talk about, services to armed forces, which is where, where our organization started many years ago, and international services. A few statistics about our accomplishments in 2022, we had a close to 18,000 blood drives. Every two seconds, someone, somebody in the United States needs blood. We collect, Red Cross collects 40% of the nation's blood. One pipe serves, saves three lives. We serve 1,200 members of the armed, armed services in our county. We have 2,000 volunteers. We have 80, 800 youth involved, 30 Red Cross clubs and youth clubs around the county. 95% of our workforce are volunteers. So when you see all these people going to different disasters, hurricanes, storms, locally, nationally, internationally, the large portion of our workforce are volunteers. And 90 cents of every dollar supports humanitarian services. So not only are we an incredible volunteer organization, we're one of the most responsible financially organizations in the, in the country, perhaps in the world. We also have initiatives with climate change because we're seeing a lot more devastating and long-term disasters around the country, hurricanes and fires and wildfires in California, storms. And so we're looking into how we can make our communities more resilient and maintain continuity. We are, are, have our own environmental footprint at Red Cross. We're taking very seriously. In fact, in Santa Clara, we are one of the first in the country that are going to be using all electric vehicles. One of these days, maybe we'll have autonomous vehicles delivering blood to hospitals. That'll be, that'll be interesting, but we'll see, we'll see when that day comes. Everybody says, well, what can you do? Well, we'll talk a little bit about blood in a second, but you can volunteer. We have many, obviously, most of our people are volunteers. So we offer all kinds of training for various volunteer roles at Red Cross. Obviously, we are always collecting not only blood, but also funds to support our efforts. You can host a blood drive, not only give blood, but it would be kind of interesting to see if the city could host a blood drive in some, in some way. Maybe we can think about that. Get trained, of course, first aid, AED, CPR. And you can visit redcross.org for all of these services in great detail. And we have a bunch of apps too. So for those of you that are interested in giving blood, you can download our, our, our blood donation app and have everything at your fingertips through your phone. The last thing I want to mention is during the last floods, we had two shelters, one at Camden Community Center and one at Seven Trees Community Center, run by the city of San Jose. Each one had 100 unhoused people because the city of San Jose went, you know, organized an effort to work with nonprofit organizations to bring those folks in, in the, in the flood zones and the creek beds to safety. And we had 100 people, individuals, families, children, people that were disabled at each one of our shelters. And we were there for close to a month, about three and a half weeks. And it was a pretty amazing experience for our volunteers and for everyone involved. When the shelter was closing at the Camden Community Center, I saw on the table a bouquet of flowers and a card. And I said, well, who, who, where did this come from? And it was the clients that we were serving that bought the bouquet of flowers and presented us with a card, thanking us. God, God bless you. Thanks for saving our, our lives, saving our family. Thank you. Thank you for all, you're awesome. This was, this was a gentleman by the name of David and he had a number, number 20. That was his cot number at the shelter. Every once in a while, you know, you think about doing good things and you have to focus on, on the why. And, and this card is, is the constant reminder, member, memory of, of the why we do what we do. So I want to thank you all. I understand the mayor is going to give blood, which I think is very exciting. We're, we're looking forward to that. It's going to be a wonderful occasion. I'll get extra snacks for him at the blood center in San Jose. And I would encourage you all to participate and volunteer at Red Cross and support us in what you've been doing for many, many years in Monte Sereno. So thank you.
Well, thank you very much. And yes, I will, I am making a commitment to donate blood.
We are.
Would any other council members like to make a comment?
I could, I just want to thank you for coming. I mean, really, a lot of work at Red Cross has to do both nationally and internationally. So then get it ready. And I join our mayor and give a little.
Excellent.
I'll make sure he comes.
Yes. No, no, just thank you very much for the work you do. I've, I, I remember hearing Hurricane Katrina and actually way back to the to the earthquake back in 1988, Red Cross was there and helping a lot of people. And I was actually living down in Scott Valley at the time and went to one of your sandwich building centers and we made 500 sandwiches that day. It was a lot of fun. Until we found out we weren't supposed to be putting mayonnaise on them. Tell us these things. Well, I don't think anybody died from our sandwiches though, so.
I'm sure.
Yeah, thank you again for all the service.
Sure. Pleasure. Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Thank you very much. And now we've got a presentation from Santa Clara County Fire.
Good evening. We have a PowerPoint. To get that set up, my name's Mark Schumate. I'm a deputy chief, assigned to the training division right now for Santa Clara County Fire. With me, I have Jason Polarski, deputy chief in charge of the operations division. And on Zoom, we have our fire chiefs who want to girt gow. And we are your fire department. So this is our biannual update. So we'll go over the call volume and that sort of thing for the city of Monte Sereno. And then during that time, I'll share a little bit about the fire department as it pertains mostly to the city of Monte Sereno. So we provide regionalized emergency services for the county and beyond. But regionalized services can, you know, get down even as far as the city of Monte Sereno. We have various fire stations. We have the Keto Fire Station in Monte Sereno. We also have Saratoga Fire Station that runs calls in Monte Sereno. If this engine's tied up or at the shop or, you know, various other things that fire engines do. We also have the Los Gadas Fire Station that runs calls in Monte Sereno. So you guys are surrounded by county fire and the call, or the response time show that. Next slide, please. So I'm not going to show the video tonight. It's a nine-minute video. But what I will do is point out that our website has a video on there. It's just an overview of the department. It's about a nine-minute video, like I said. And anybody interested in the department, it's a good video to give you that overview of what we do and who we are. So next slide, please. So as I said, within the city of Monte Sereno, we have Keto Fire Station located on Saratoga-Los Gadas Road. Monte Sereno has a couple of very unique hazards. One is in the wildland interface, which a lot of our department is in the wildland interface. But yours has unique challenges of having very narrow roads and places, which slows our access. But what we've done to assist with that is we have wildland fire engines. Wildland fire engines are built a little narrower, a little easier access, structure fires. We do just fine accessing. We have plenty of hose on the fire engines, hoses that we can drag to narrow, narrower areas. But the wildland, we need to be mobile and we've got fire engines, two different types of wildland fire engines that allow us to be mobile in these narrow areas. One's called the type three. They carry a little more water, a little more equipment. And then we've got a type six. It looks more like a pickup truck with a pump on the back of it and it carries some water. So those allow us to be very mobile in the areas like Monte Sereno that have areas with very tight spaces and difficult access. So all of this is to take better care of our citizens and, and the jurisdictions that we serve. So we have diversified our fleet to reflect the areas that we serve.
So I'm going to stop sharing the screen just for a bit because I think our folks aren't feeling that. So give me one second to, to share and make sure. There we go.
Okay. Next slide, please. Okay, here's only my glasses. So I've got the entire year, 2022, January 1st to December 31st. So in the top left corner, we're in incident counts by year. So it goes back to 2016 up through 2022. And if you take a look at all through the pandemic, Monte Sereno's been pretty consistent. Some of the areas we saw a dip, Cupertino, for instance, because we didn't have people commuting into the city. So it took a dip, the call volume took a dip. Monte Sereno's been pretty much straight across the board, very consistent with the call volume throughout the, the whole pandemic. If you go below that, the bar graph there, that shows calls by the hour of day. And the difference there is the orange bars are the responses and the blue bars are the apparatus coming in to respond to those calls. So again, the orange bars are the calls. So if we get a structure fire, you're going to get more apparatus for one call. If you have an EMS call, you're going to get one apparatus for each call. So that, that's the difference there. And that's by hour of day. With such a small call volume, one or two calls can really skew that graph. So for Monte Sereno, that, that's nice to know, but it's, it's very easily skewed because of the lower call volume in the city, which is a great thing. You guys have helped this city. Not surprisingly, if you go to the next chart over, EMS calls make up a large portion of your call volume. Again, another good thing, you know, that's why we're here. We have paramedics on each fire engine. And we'll talk about the response times in a minute, but 133 EMS calls in a year, service calls, 67, that could be anything from somebody has a water leak and they can't figure out how to turn the water off to somebody needs, somebody has fallen out of bed and they need help getting a family member back into bed. Kind of runs the gamut there. And then from there, fire alarms, 15 calls for fires of that, eight of them had dollar losses for total of $58,400 in dollar loss for the city of Monte Sereno in 2022, which is very low in comparison to some of the other cities that we serve. So good job, Monte Sereno. We go to the bottom left. That's the response time. And our average response time takes into consideration all the rigs that you see there on the left, which is Saratoga Station, Seven Spring Station in Cupertino, Los Gadas Station, and then Winchester Station that serves the Daves Road area. Our days, yeah, days. So given all that and the fact that, you know, engine 78 is out on a call or if they are out of the area training or at the shop and we have other stations covering, the average response time for code three lights and siren emergency calls is four minutes and 54 seconds. And when you take into consideration some of the narrow accesses, that is the entire time. That, that is the entire call. So you call into 911, four minutes and 54 seconds on average, we're at your front door. So that's very good response time, like I said, given the access here. So the last thing I want to talk about on this chart is the community education and risk reduction activities for the year. We had 62 programs and made contact with 1,524 citizens. So that could be anything from, you know, the races that run through here, community, community events where we have a booth up, senior citizen talks that we do, schools, go over Dave's Avenue and, and have our public education department over there teaching the kids about fire safety, stop, drop and roll. Tell your mom and dad to pull over when they see red lights and sirens behind them. They, they have all kinds of topics that we teach for public education. Okay, next slide. And then just a little information about the department. In 2021, we reaccredited as a CFAI accredited agency. This is our third or fourth accreditation. So what does this do? Why do we have to accredit? Why do we spend the time and effort to accredit? Well, this makes us take a good look at ourselves and it holds us accountable to ourselves as well as to the citizens and all of you to make sure that we are doing things right as efficiently as we can. And we continue to do that and we continue to look for areas of improvement within the organization. Annually, we do a self-assessment that's guided by the CFAI. And then every four years, we have to do a full reaccreditation. And when we do that, we complete the, all the assessment forms and then they send a peer review team out here. And the peer review team looks at everything. They go through the financials, they visit fire stations, they check out our apparatus, they interview employees. So it, it's a very comprehensive accreditation process. And like I said, the, the most important thing here is it holds us accountable to ourselves and to all of you. Yes, thank you. And a few capital improvements. So we replaced two rescues within the fleet last year. Rescue 74, which is at a money station in Los Altos. Rescue A3, which impacts Monte Sereno because it's a Los Gadas Station house there. We had a USR type, type one USR that lives at Winchester Station. So any large rescues, building collapses, that sort of thing. We now have a rescue that is cross-staffed with our truck that has all the tools and equipment we need to shore up a leaning structure or to do heavy rescue within the jurisdiction. Coming in 20, we also replaced truck 85 out of Winchester Station. So we've got a brand new truck there as well. Coming in 2023, we're replacing engine 73, which is out of Saratoga, engine 80 out of Campbell and engine 76 out of the city of Los Altos, as well as our breathing support. And the breathing support goes to all of the structure fires within the jurisdiction and mutual aid when it's called for. And what that allows us to do is refill bottles. So when we go in and breathe our air going into a structure fire or a dangerous situation, we have the ability, we have one now. We have one now. This will replace the one that we have, but that allows us to refill bottles on scene. And allows us to get people back in and putting them back to work sooner than if we had to wait for someone to pick up a trailer somewhere and bring bottles to us. And this goes to every structure fire. Next slide please. And then looking at completion this year, we have a new headquarters on on Dell Avenue and Campbell. We're hoping to move into that in fall of twenty twenty three. And on the right there, Redwood Fire Station should be completed within the next few months. And we're hoping to move in there soon after its completion. So we're really excited about these two new opportunities. We've kind of outgrown our current headquarters there on Winchester Boulevard and we're excited to have a new building. And have, right now, our fire prevention division is separate from, it's on the corner of Lorcan Winchester. And the headquarters is a couple of blocks down the street. So we're excited to have everybody back under the same roof. It'll make logistics and meeting a lot easier between the divisions. Did we skip one or two?
No, I came back to.
Okay, thank you. One of the other things that we're doing this year is we're replacing our CAD system. So computer computer rated dispatch, county communications, the management team there, our county fire employees. And what the CAD system will do is it will help us get to you faster. And so some of the ways that we'll do that, obviously, we've got old technology now that was put together in the seventies. So just having new faster equipment will help the dispatchers get, figure out who they need, who the best people to send are and get them on the road sooner. The other thing that this will provide for us is it'll figure out who the closest unit is. So if Saratoga is driving through Monte Serena going somewhere to the shop or whatever. And a call comes in and the Saratoga rig is closer, they will go to the call rather than calling engine seventy eight, who may be a little farther away from the call at the time it comes in. So this will allow us to send the closest unit a lot easier than we do now and shave some of the time off that for our response times. One of the other things we're doing for capturing data is we just replaced our record management system. So our old system was okay. This is much better. So this will allow us to provide better data for the accreditation process for ourselves and to report out to you all as well. Next slide please. Thank you. So we also last year, for the first time, had a fuels crew, fire fuels crew. We had six people on the crew last year and support team members on top of the six. This year, we've added two to that. So we'll have eight crew members. And what these this crew is designed for is to go out and create shaded fuel breaks. And what that does is we go out and remove fuel at, in certain areas that will help us strategically build boxes for large wildland fires. And what we do when we build the boxes, it it allows us to hopefully contain the fire in a lot smaller area. So we're doing a little work ahead of time. It's like landscaping the forest. And this will allow us to hopefully, if a fire gets started, to get crews on scene. It should, in theory, slow the fire down and allow us to hopefully catch up to it. And rather than having it just go crazy as we've seen some of the fires in the state do. So there, this is a lot of hard work. They're doing good work out there. And if this video will play, like this shows just a few minutes on the story, a new story that CBS did, it's only a few minute video.
This is a video?
Should be.
I don't think it shows as a video.
Okay, that's okay. We can move on to the next slide. Okay, community education. The only other thing I want to say about that is that the pandemic actually worked to our benefit for public education, because everything before the pandemic was in person and we tried to reach out to as many people as possible. The pandemic gave us Zoom, gave us online. We're now able to reach out to a lot more people in this hybrid version, much like the city council meeting tonight. So that, like I said, increases our numbers of reach out and allows more people who may not be mobile enough to get to a site to to view some of our classes. This will now allow them to do it in the comfort of their own homes. Another thing that we've done with public education is we're in the process of converting everything over and translating into various foreign languages, which, you know, is we have a very diverse area here. And and we're trying to reach out to as many people as possible. Right now, we have Cantonese, Mandarin, and Spanish, and we're looking to expand that as we go along. So again, trying to reach out to as many people as possible. Next slide please. Then twenty twenty three goals for preparedness, wildland workshops, working with our city and town, building those partnerships and maintaining those partnerships. Community outreach for wildfire preparedness, as well as just, you know, your standard, like as I mentioned before, stop, drop, and roll and that sort of thing. We are the operational area coordinator for the county, which means that we're responsible for all to for supporting and overseeing all the mutual aid resources that come into the county or leave the county. County Fire is responsible for all of that. Planning, we just did our strategic plan, which some of you in the room participated in. We thank you for that. And we expect to hit print on that strategic plan very shortly. It's almost, almost finished. Pre-fire management and wildfire resiliency, that's a mouthful. We have expanded that division in our department so that we can provide better service and better information to our citizens. And resilience. Oh, the replacement of the two aging fire stations and the headquarters. So Kino Station, we are gonna remodel that. We're gonna be adding general gender neutral bathrooms. Adding individual quarters. Right now, they're kind of in a dorm style setting. So it will be adding private dorms in there for more privacy. And just kind of upgrading everything, making it a more comfortable station and newer, better living quality within the station. And that's it. Any questions for me?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just had a.
Yes.
Thanks for asking this. I mean, you guys are committed to government. Your response time, you're leaving in four minutes and fifty four seconds is excellent. That's a pretty big county of cities that you're serving. Is one of the concerns in Monte Serena, the wildfire is a main concern. Are there any emergency vehicles to, what's gonna happen is if there's a massive fire like in Paradise, there was. We don't have really good access to get out the roads.
Right.
Are there plans on having some emergency vehicles which can go in and, you know, bus more than a handful of people if they get stuck or? It's really two things. What is emergency plan for you guys who would get it?
Yeah.
There's a car jam, traffic fight off, you may as well do that. And then for the citizens to get out.
Yeah, that that's always a concern. It's, you know, it's in the Oakland Hills many years ago. As people are trying to get out of these neighborhoods, it's blocking us from getting into the neighborhoods and vice versa. It's slowing the people down from getting out. So that's always a concern for the fire department. For us, we rely on our law enforcement partners to do the evacuations because the best thing we can do is the fire department is go in and put the fire out. That takes all the danger out of it. And and we always focus on that. Let's get the fire out because the longer we let the fire grow. Obviously, the more people that are impacted by by the fire itself. So the sooner we can get in there, I mentioned that the smaller vehicles that we we now have to provide better service to these areas in those wildfire conditions. The best thing that we can do is the fire department is go in there and start attacking the fire. And then, as I said, law enforcement will go in and start doing the evacuations. And right now, to answer your question directly, no, we don't have any any vehicles that can go in and and get a bunch of citizens, load a bunch of citizens up and and remove them from the area. But, you know, that's.
Yeah, I don't think any jurisdiction has that.
Yeah.
Something to think about.
Yeah.
What is your assessment of the likelihood of this area, Monte Serena, of getting a fire that happened in Oakland Hills? Is there any?
That assessment of that. It it's really hard to judge. I mean, it it, you know, that the fuels crew, that's that's the reason we added that is because you're not the only area we serve that that has these these conditions and and the threats that we have here. So, you know, we put the fuels crew to work, building those shaded fuel breaks to help slow fires down so that we can catch them. But, you know, it's one of those things where the way the weather is, so, you know, this year we had a lot of rain. So a lot of rain means in general that you're gonna have a heavier fuel load. So, you know, there used to be a joke in the fire service, you know, this is gonna be the worst fire season ever. The last ten years, it's kind of been true every single year. It just keeps getting a little bit worse and a little bit worse. So, you know, in in these situations, that's why we do so much public education. You know, because all it takes is somebody with a fire pit or a spark, somebody tossing a cigarette out of a car. You know, it's just, it's so hard to judge where the fire is gonna start. So to give you the likelihood of a fire in this area, I I don't have that information.
Okay, we've got, someone's got their hand raised there. I think that's. Oh, if I actually have to say something. Yeah, let's take the fire chief first and then we'll go to council member Turner. Please, I think the chief's got something to say.
Chief Schumate's doing a great job. Can you, can everybody hear me? Really kind of outlining why we created the fuels crew. Again, that was funded by the West Valley Grant that was procured from Assembly Member Evan Low. In the chat, what I have up there in terms of how we best manage fires when it is moving quickly is Zone Haven. So it's one of those things that in in the past, trying to make citizens or community aware of what's going on around them was really difficult. But county fire procured Zone Haven on our own, I want to say it was two years ago. And now it is a regional platform throughout all the counties. So if you go to the link that's provided there and bookmark it. Then if there's anything going on and you want to know what's going on, it doesn't have to be necessarily in Monte Serena. But if something's going on in Las Gadas or Saratoga, if it is something significant, we have a team on our own call that will go in and put in information there for Zone Haven. And that helps people get awareness ahead of time. So if there is a fast moving fire, even if it isn't directly affecting Monte Serena, you can at least get a heads up of what what's, what protective actions are in place and whether there are an evacuation order or evacuation warning. And again, we do that through the partnership with our law enforcement jurisdictional partners.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner, you've got a question. You've got your hand up. And then Vice Mayor Wolsheimer.
Yes, I do. I have been a cert volunteer for for about five and a half years now. And I wanted to to thank you so much for the training that we received during the pandemic. I think I I got more training during the pandemic than I did in the last three years before that. I know that it's it's very difficult to fire, to have fires that are pretty close to you. I was almost a victim of the fire in in Oregon. The house was, the fire was about a mile away from from our house in Oregon. And I wanted to find out from you, the reason that so many houses there were saved was because we had helicopters. And and in your presentation, I didn't see the use of helicopters for fighting fires. And I was wondering if we have the resources from other jurisdictions to be able to fight fires.
We do. We we partner with CAL FIRE. There there's.
One zero six?
Yeah, so we have a brand new helicopter in the area, Copter one zero six owned by CAL FIRE. We work very closely with CAL FIRE on a daily basis in the jurisdiction and outside of the jurisdiction. And anytime there's a fire threatening CAL FIRE's area, which is most of our area, CAL FIRE responds as well and utilizes their aircraft, not only the helicopter, but fixed wing aircraft as well. If there's a large fire, they'll load those fixed wing aircraft up with retardant. And they'll respond to the area and drop retardant if it's if it's needed. The helicopter works a little differently, dropping water and it can refill itself with static water sources like Lexington.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Councilmember, sorry, Vice Mayor Wolsheimer.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank you for all the great work that you do keeping us safe. It's very impressive. So thank you very much. My question is, has there been any discussion about instead of going to larger vehicles, going to very small vehicles? And I'm asking this because in other jurisdictions, I've seen very small vehicles, size of a van or a mini van. I've even seen EMTs on motorcycles. They're able to respond much more quickly than these these sometimes very large vehicles that that seem to be predominant now.
Chief, you want to take that one?
I can. I I so one of the things that we do is all risk. And within the budget that the department has, even if the vegetation is burning, burning, what frequently it threatens is the structure. So we need to have the tools and equipment inclusive of the gallonage of water that's on those larger vehicles. So yes, in theory, the department could look at smaller vehicles. But the problem is is that when you have smaller vehicles and you've got the access solved potentially, maybe, then you would quickly run out of water. And really, at the end of the day, you've got to put suppression material on whatever's burning. So it really isn't feasible for the district to look at smaller, if you will, suppression vehicles because we are all risk. We're doing both wildland and structure protection. And the houses that are in the area are quite large. Some of them can be very large. And what we're trying to do, as you see from our annual report, there was only fifty eight thousand dollars in dollar loss. And I know Chief Schumate said that was good for Monte Serena, but really, that's a reflection, in my opinion, of getting there on time, doing really good work and stopping the fire in either the room or the origin, wherever the origin of the fire was. So for the department, we are not looking at smaller vehicles. What we are looking at is more sustainable vehicles in terms of either hybrids or electric for our vehicles first. There are some hybrid fire engines out there, but we do not want to be the first ones buying those. We were gonna, we're keeping an eye on those type of vehicles for, again, just environmental sustainability, reducing our carbon footprint. But in terms of the actual big toolbox that we have, we have to be able to have what we need on scene because the next unit may not be coming for a while. Does that answer the question?
Yes. Thank you. Other questions? No. All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We we can open it up for public, but usually, sure, would any, if if there's a member of the public that would like to make a comment, please raise your virtual hand. No answer raised. Okay. Well, once again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And everyone feels a lot better. And uh, everyone feels a lot better knowing that you can respond.
That's a good thing.
Appreciate that.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, council members.
All right. So we've had our two presentations. Thank you very much, appreciate that. Uh, we'll move to oral communications. If you would like to make any uh, comment on an item that is not on the agenda that is relevant to the city of Montessorino. Uh, please come forward. Uh, if you're here in chambers or if you're uh, attending via Zoom, please raise your virtual hand. There are no hands raised. I will close oral communications and we'll move to written communications. Uh, do we have any written communications?
Um, all written communication received was forwarded to council and updated into the agenda.
Okay, so all written communications have been sent to council and included in the relevant agenda item. Nothing new. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Turner, go ahead.
Oh. No, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Now we've got the consent calendar. Would any member of council like to ask brief questions or pull an item or items? On the consent calendar? Councilmember Turner, you have your hand raised.
Yes, this this time I do. Um, I would like to uh, remove two items from the consent calendar. Uh, item one, because uh, it is the approval of the minutes of a meeting for which I was not present. And then I also wanted to remove item seven, the agreement with Silicon Valley Clean Energy.
Okay, um, Councilmember Turner, which minutes would you like? To remove because you did not attend that meeting?
Uh, item one, oh, which 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 uh, meeting? February the twenty-third.
February twenty-third. All right, can we leave the twenty-first?
Oh, hang on, maybe it is the twenty-first.
Actually, I I need to have the.
No, it is the twenty-third.
Yeah, that that is, you don't mind, let's just remove item one.
Okay, we'll we'll remove item one, so that leaves items two. Through six, and you wanted to remove item seven?
Yes, please.
And uh. So that said, do we have any comments from the public on any of those consent items? Or would a member of the public would like to remove an item from consent? If so, please raise your virtual hand. No hands are raised. Uh, with that, I'd be looking for a motion. On the, on items two through six. I move that we approve consent items two through six.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Alany?
Yes.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wolfheimer?
Yes.
Mayor Megachan?
I, motion carries. Now, on uh, the approval of the minutes. We, do you have uh? Comments on that, or do you just want to abstain?
Uh, yeah, I I just wanted to stand for number one since.
Okay, and the same with Councilmember Turner, uh.
I just wanted to make a quick comment, and based on the recent council member training that I attended in Sacramento in January. You are allowed to vote on minutes, even if you are not at the meeting. A lot of people. Uh, I see her mistaken that they are not allowed to vote on the meeting since they weren't there, but as long as they approve the minutes. Based on any knowledge that they have about the meeting, they they are allowed to vote. I just wanted to let everybody know that. Because I think some people feel like that they really should not vote on minutes for meetings that they don't attend, but they are allowed to.
Thank you. Uh, in the interests, in the interest of expeden- expediency. I'm looking for a motion.
I move that we. I move that we approve the minutes for the. February twenty-first regular city council meeting.
And the special meeting?
I've seen House Member.
Okay, we've got a motion to approve the minutes of the Feb. twenty-one regular council meeting. I will second that motion. Uh, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Yeah. Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Councilmember Locky?
Abstain.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wolfheimer?
Yes.
Mayor Megachan?
I, motion carries. Yes, Councilmember Craig?
I would also like to make a motion that we approve the minutes for the February twenty-third special city council meeting.
I'll second that motion. Uh, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Yeah. Councilmember Turner?
Abstain.
Uh, Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Councilmember Locky?
Abstain.
Vice Mayor Wolfheimer?
Yes.
Mayor Megachan?
I, motion carries. With that, um. We've got item seven, and we could take that later, or we could take it now. I think we can take it now. Do we have a staff report on that, please? City manager?
Yes, so. Essentially, um, this is a grant that staff had applied for for decarbonization. Uh, credit from Silicon Valley Clean Energy, and it was awarded to us in the amount of forty thousand dollars. Uh, we are going to use it to upgrade our um, building permitting system. That's essentially what.
Excuse me, is it six inch holder seven? I think you're referring to six.
I apologize. I think I see acceptance of the decarbonization agreement with Silicon Valley Clean Energy. I apologize, I was. Working off of six.
Yep.
We will go back to seven. So this is the half a million dollar grant that we are receiving from Silicon Valley Clean Energy, which um. Was applied for back in the month of December. Originally, the grant was declined, but subsequently, in the month of January, Silicon Valley Clean Energy issued more grant funding. And this was on behalf of our community room project. Um, what we're now calling the community, I guess, center building next door. So essentially, we were awarded five hundred thousand dollars to put towards that project. Um, acceptance of this grant is mandatory by a vote, a majority vote of city council. And uh, staff's recommendation is that council accepts the grant for five hundred thousand dollars. And of course, the the building has not been formally, uh, the design has not been completed, it has not gone out for bid yet. However, this would be more grant money in addition to the previous grant money, which was a Prop sixty-eight money in the amount of. One hundred and sixty-eight thousand, as well as the previous Silicon Valley Clean Energy grant in the amount of eighteen thousand and change. That we received previously, bringing the total of the grant funds to about almost seven hundred thousand dollars. On the project. That concludes uh, staff's report, and we are available for questioning.
Thank you. I'll ask a question. Um, if we choose not to proceed with the project. Then what happens to the grant?
The grant money, I assume at that point in time would um. Be returned or not accepted.
It wouldn't be dispersed.
It would not be dispersed. Essentially, with, I I was going to use the words die on the line, it would just be. It would just be there, uh, an uncashed check, so to speak.
I I understand. So let me clarify. If we accept the grant tonight, that doesn't obligate. Let me ask it as a question. Does it obligate us to move forward with the community center?
No, it does not.
Thank you. Uh, other council members, do you have any questions? I see Councilmember Turner has her hand raised. Go ahead, Councilmember Turner.
Uh, yes, I I, um. Let me put down my head. Okay, so uh, let me just begin by saying that I put a lot of time into understanding this proposed agreement here. And I would like to support this project, but I have some questions on the cost and um. I have some concerns about draining the city's reserves to fund, to fund our, this project. So I'd like to get some clarity on those, so we can move forward. Um, this document actually estimates the total cost of the project to be one million dollars. And it implies that Silicon Valley Clean Energy will fund five hundred thousand of that. Is that right, Steve?
That is correct, according to the document, yes.
Okay, so if both statements are accurate, then uh, I would be more inclined to support this effort. But I do have some questions, though. Uh, number one is, how confident are we of the one million dollar price tag? That would take, would cost for building the community center? And uh. Are there any written documentations on that? On the cost?
So previously, the project was sent out to bid. And bids were received in summer of twenty twenty-one, brought before council in September of twenty twenty-one. We received three bids. I think at the time, the highest bid was eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. And since that time, the the building has gone back for some value engineering. And there is a revised version of the building with additional square footage. We are still waiting to send that project out to bid. But I would say the low end of the estimate is probably uh, one million dollars, and it could be higher than that. Um, but the good news is, is that council previously had voted to spend six hundred thousand dollars on the building. That fund is already, or that those funds are already in a separate bucket in our um, general fund account. Uh, directed towards the community center with this additional five hundred thousand dollars plus the other grant monies. Uh, the building is getting uh, less expensive, or there will be less draw on our general funds. Um, going forward than was previously, uh. How can I say this? Previously understood by council. So this is actually a very good news. Um, if the project does go up in price, of course, the the project will go out to bid, it will come before council for a decision at that time. So um, council will have a chance to weigh in on that decision at future time. But at this point in time, the estimate is, you know, uh, probably around a million dollars plus mark for the building.
Uh, just a sec, I'll I'll intervene for just a moment with a clarifying comment slash question. Just because we accept the grant. That doesn't obligate us to take the project out to bid, nor to approve the project. So really, tonight, we're accepting the grant. If, and we will receive it if we fulfill our obligation, which is to to build. The building to the specifications that are put forth in our grant application. Is that correct, Mr. Leon Aris?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Megcheck.
Okay, uh, do you have more questions, uh, Councilmember Turner?
Yes, I do. I I actually have a uh, probably a two or three more. Uh, so if I may, I'd like to ask him, uh, the SBC five hundred thousand commitment. In this agreement has, seems to have a lot of wiggle room. It is not really a commitment, when I read it, for five hundred thousand dollars. It is a commitment to fund up to a maximum of five hundred thousand dollars. For work that they consider to be consistent with the project description, if you look at exhibit A. It is a reimbursement agreement, and it is contingent on their board. Ongoing commitment to funding this effort. So if we spend the money first and then apply to SBC for reimbursement. Then they make a determination, should we reimburse this or not? So it's not, it's not a typical grant that we've seen where they actually give you the money. So I guess the first part of my question is this. Do do we believe that all the costs associated with this project would be? Reimbursable under this agreement? This is for 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 the city manager to answer, please. Or will their reimbursement be limited to energy conservation? Uh, expenses like solar, batteries, cooktop, hot water, recirculation?
Thank you for the question. So the language of the grant reads very much like most grants. You fulfill the obligations of the grant application, and when you fulfill those obligations, you are reimbursed. So like any grant, there are stipulations for the money. It isn't just a blank check. But based on the design that is being completed as we speak. Uh, we we intend to fulfill the obligations as specified in the grant application. And we do intend to spend all five hundred thousand dollars fulfilling those obligations.
Thank you. You said you had another question?
Yes, I do, I do. Um. What is, what about the the? Let me, let me ask this. Next, I want to ask about funding for this project, right? The council approved six hundred thousand dollars for the remodeling of the annex. Approximately two hundred thousand of that money was expected to come from grants. Is that what you were talking about earlier, Steve? I wanted to ask about the status of those grants, uh, and and did we get the money from from? Um, the grantor, is it escrow to be applied against this project? Can you, can you address that, please?
Certainly. So recap, I know it's been a long time. Council allocated back in twenty twenty. It was four hundred fifty thousand plus a twenty percent or twenty-five percent contingency. Which brought the total up to six hundred thousand directly from the general fund. Subsequently, engineer Jessica Khan at the time applied for Prop sixty-eight grant funds, which. Um, were in the amount of about a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. Which um, a good majority of that money is still available for us to spend towards the. Uh, completion, construction of this structure. So um, in other words, those grant funds that we subsequently received in, I believe it was in late twenty twenty. Perhaps early twenty twenty-one, were in addition to, or icing on the cake, so to speak, towards the project. That were not necessarily originally um. Voted upon by council, or how do I say this? Council's expectation was, at the time, we spent up to six hundred thousand out of our general fund. The additional grant monies, if we applied them towards the building, and the total cost of the building was six hundred, yes, your math would be four hundred thousand out of the general fund. Um, I hope that answers your question.
Uh, the the city's commitment was four hundred thousand, if I remember it right, from the general fund?
Hold, hold, hold on. Councilmember Craig, you were next. Go ahead.
Mister Mayor, I think we are not discussing the agenda item anymore. The agenda item is, do we want to accept the grant? We're not accepting grant. We're not discussing the building, or the finances of the building. Or does it meet any particular purpose or or anything else? I think we're just supposed to vote. Do we want the grant? Afterwards, we make a decision on if we want the building.
Understood. Thank you for getting the discussion back on track. Uh, I'll go back to Councilmember Turner. Do you have a question relevant to accepting the grant or not? Uh, if you have.
Yeah, yes, I do. I, for me, the questions are relevant, because I need to know. You know, the validity and how much it's gonna cost. It's it's like my son asking me, you know, I need to spend this kind of money. So for for a project, and I I want to get the 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 big picture, since I'm not part of the committee, right? So I don't hear everything, but I have one final question, if I may ask, please. May I ask a final question?
I was going.
Okay, from this, from this document. It, it appears that the primary purpose of this facility would be to showcase Silicon Valley Clean Energy Technology. It is a showcase and, and the educational center, which is good. Um, not just for Montessorino, but for the entire service area, for the, the areas that they service as well. So with that kind of visitor load. Uh, I, I believe that we're looking at a dedicated staff to run this facility, maybe a cou- a couple of uh, full-time people. And, and I did the math from the report that they gave us. They said, we, we were gonna use three thousand um. Three thousand hours, right, conducting tours, giving demonstrations. And that is close to, if I, if, if I were to break it down, ten hours a day, five days a week, fifty-two weeks a year. So that would take, you know, a load. And we would need a dedicated staff to do that. Is the city expected to fund this? Or will cl- this clean energy showplace that S V C is funding? Will they shoulder some of those expenses going forward?
So I'm not familiar with what you're describing for staffing, but it seems quite excessive um. The, the obligation as you described it. All I know is that this is going to function as a multi-use community room slash community center. One of the aspects of it will be to highlight gr- uh, green energy, clean energy. For the surrounding, of course, Montessorino community, but the surrounding community as well. The current Montessorino staff intends to staff the additional requirements of this community room as needed by the public. So that's ultimately the plan.
Thank you, Mister Leon Artis. Um, Councilmember Lahi, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Uh, I, I, I'm just amazed that we were able to get this grant from Silicon Valley Clean Energy. Uh, Silicon Valley Clean Energy is very type of funding. And for a small city like Montessorino to pull off a five hundred thousand. Grant, uh, it's all me and Mac Check's work, and I would like him, uh, after getting it done. And that is just amazing that we were able to put, put this thing together. I've served on the Silicon Valley Clean Energy Executive Committee, and on there for four years, and now me and Mac Check is serving. Uh, on the executive committee and also uh, on, on some other committees. Uh, this is an amazing grant, and it is a grant. The city council will have to decide what kind of building is gonna be built, and that probably comes before us. That is not really something uh, we should fret about right now. I, I, I think it's good for Councilmember Turner to bring those up, so we can keep. The thing that she's concerned about on, in mind when we bring that proposal forward. But uh, and this will be a, this will put Montessorino on the map, this will be a historical thing that Montessorino has done. Uh, or we'll, we'll get to do this year. Uh, that both of our buildings have been sitting vacant forever. And uh, when, when I got on council, one of my, I thought was to do something with it. And I'm, I'm glad we moved forward, and this, this is really getting something done for, uh, on the cheap. And also, I, I think the hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollar grant, my question to you, uh, uh, city manager and others. Does that ever end it? Do we have to use it by the end of this year or next year or something?
Thank you, Councilmember Lahi. Yes, we are supposed to spend all those monies by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-three, as well as the money in this grant.
Alright, so let's get moving then. Thank you. Backline for, for the, for the. As you see, okay.
Uh, and now we've got a question from Vice Mayor Wolsheimer. Go ahead, please.
Uh, thank you. Uh, I just want to express my support for with uh. What Councilmember Craig just said, I think we should try to limit the discussion to what is on the agenda tonight, which is acceptance of the grant. And the other items that were brought up are not on the agenda and are more appropriate for another meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, with that, uh, we've had a number of questions from all the council members. Uh, I'd like to open this for public comment. If you're a member of the public and you're here in person, please come forward to the podium. Uh, if you're attending virtually, please raise your virtual hand. No, no one has raised their virtual hand. I will close public comment on that and bring it back to council, and I think uh. Vice Mayor Wolsheimer, I thought I heard a, a perhaps a motion there.
Sorry, I lost the. Audio for a while.
Oh, I'm, okay, uh, perhaps Councilmember Lahi.
Yeah, I, 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 I would like to move uh, the, the. What is your accept the grant, reviewing but to even valid energy?
Uh, we've got a motion and we need a second.
I support that. Thank you.
And we've got a motion. Second, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Councilmember Lahi?
Yes.
Councilmember Turner?
Uh, li- I will vote yes. However, I would like to see. Perhaps even Sergio tightening the language in this agreement, so we're not gonna be left holding the bag. But I will vote yes.
Vice Mayor McCheck, I mean, sorry, Wolsheimer?
Yes.
And Mayor McCheck, my question.
Uh. Yes, and I'm a little troubled because you're asking for a change to the wording, and I'm not sure that was in the motion. It's not.
Well, and I, I will say that I, I don't have authority to change the agreement after the council approves it, unless the council includes. Clear authority to do so. I would be concerned about the city further changing the grant agreement without. Cause that would require us to go back to the granting agency and negotiating those changes. Um, they may not want to continue giving you the grant if you modify the grant agreement, so.
Thank you. I'll, I'll go back to Councilmember Turner, and you said yes with a proviso. Uh, would you like to say yes with no proviso, or would you like to vote no, or would you like to abstain?
Uh, I'll vote yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. With that, uh, we move to unfinished business, and item one under unfinished business is waiver of second reading. And adoption of ordinance number N S two thirty-three. And ordinance of the city council, the city of Montessorino amending section ten dot oh one dot zero dot, uh, dot zero two zero. Which is definitions and specific terms. Do we have a staff report on that, please? May we have staff report?
Yes, thank you. Uh, good evening, Mayor, council members. Um, I am Diana Perkins, the city's planner. At the August second city council meeting, the city council directed staff to schedule an item on a future agenda. For the council to consider the municipal code definition of a structure. And if swimming pools and spas should be removed from that definition. This was in tru- in response to comments that were raised at a co-enforcement appeal hearing, which was also held on August second. The city council discussed this issue at their September second and November fifteenth city council meetings. At the November fifteenth city council meeting, the city council directed staff to return with an ordinance. To update the definition of a structure for clarification purposes. But to keep swimming pools and spas in the definition. The site architectural commission reviewed the draft ordinance at their January fourth, twenty twenty-three meeting. And recommended that the city council introduce and adopt the ordinance by a five-zero vote. If adopted, the ordinance does not make any substantive changes to the current municipal code definitions. As the changes recommended are in line, aligned with our current administrative practice. However, the changes in the draft ordinance will clarify these definitions, which currently can be subject to a God interpretation. Staff recommends that the city council wait the second reading and adopt ordinance number N S two thirty-three. And that concludes the staff report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Um. City Manager Leon Artis, do you have any uh, additional comments? Uh, at the moment?
Thank you, uh, Mayor McCheck. Again, um, this item this evening is we're voting. On the second reading of the ordinance, as was mentioned by the city planner, no substantial changes. Um. I would encourage council to consider the information before them in the staff report. I know there is an outstanding co-enforcement issue that we are working with. And any information or feelings council member may have about that item. Probably should not be incorporated into this discussion at this time. We are presently trying to uh, schedule a hearing date for that matter. In late March. So that is my comment.
Okay, so my question is. Are we changing the ordinance? And if we're not, what are we doing? And maybe I'm asking you to repeat, uh, Ms. Perkins, what you said a few minutes ago. I, I, so my first question, are we changing the ordinance? The intent of the ordinance, yes or no? Through the definition?
No, no, no change to the intent, um, or how we're currently practicing the interpretation of these definitions. It's just for clarification.
And the clar- and so my question is, would the clarification help? Our residents and their contractors in understanding. What is included or not included and, and the calculations thereof? If someone wanted to put in a swimming pool, for example?
I would say this, the swimming pool. Um. Language and wording is not being recommended to change from the current wording. So I, I think it's pretty clear, and I think it is clear in the definition that the swimming pool is included in structural coverage. Um, what these changes are intended to clarify is that age of structure is not. Um, at grade improvements, such as walkways, pathways. Um. Low line decks.
Okay.
Those types of features.
Thank you. Other questions of council? Oh, sorry, do, Sergio, I didn't see you had your hand raised, or I, do, would you like to speak of so, please do so?
Yeah, just to supplement, uh, Planner Perkins's response, the purpose of this ordinance is to clarify the city's existing requirements with respect to structural coverage. Um, and how that is applied, as well as, uh, you know. Clarify what the city currently includes in impervious coverage and uh, what the city considers to be structural coverage. Um, the changes that would be made by this ordinance wouldn't actually modify existing city development standards. What they would do. Would be to revise the existing code language to better mirror what city staff already do in practice. And remove any potential ambiguity about what the current standards already are.
Thank you. That was, uh, you answered my question, uh, succinctly, it would remove ambiguity. Um. I have one more question, and that is. If I was, uh, had a lot. And I just, and it was built so that all of the structural coverage was met right to the maximum. And then I decided I wanted to build an A D U. And say the A D U was eight hundred square feet. My question, uh, Planner Perkins is, would. I be allowed to build the A D U? And would the, would the calculations be included in the structural coverage? Or would it further increase the structural coverage, even though it's not included in the calculations?
So um, state laws do mandate that cities um, allow an A D U of up to eight hundred square feet. So for, if you were, um, had, if there was a lot that was maximized on structural and impervious coverage. You could still build an A D U of eight hundred square feet. Yes.
So you would end up with more structural coverage at the end of the day. But the calculations would exclude it.
That's correct, for eight hundred square feet.
Thank, thank you. Uh, quite, other questions from council members before I open it to the bubble? Go ahead, uh, Councilmember Lahi.
Yeah, I, I, actually, I thought this would have been done last time, uh. There's gonna be a lighting for you to come back, and I saw the things, okay, well, that's good, but I, I liked that, then it wasn't done. Uh, the, I know the planning staff has been interpreting the, the ordinance, the city ordinance. And if cause structured coverage includes swimming pools. Nobody else in, in, in this county or in this valley, I don't know if that's true in the state, interprets uh, constructed code as including swimming pools. If you look at this, the wording of our ordinance, it doesn't actually say that. And the structure covering section is in a different place, and uh, regular covering is in a different place. But that's how it's been interpreted, so that's why this whole confusion came about. That if you're now gonna be enforcing laws, and I. You know, since the enforcement would be a quasi, whoever is going to be subjected to the enforcement. That would be a quasi judicial or criminal proceeding. The standard of proof required, I believe, in the, in attorney Ruden can uh, articulate on that. It would probably be uh, not just preponderance of evidence, but clear and convincing evidence. Which required that the statute that we are enforcing be clear and convincing, and nobody. Has any doubt about what it means. Clearly, there's been doubt on what this statute means, that's why we're clarifying it. Uh, so I, I would not, a- and, and so that's the first thing. The second thing is. It still doesn't make sense for me that Montessorino would be the only city in this whole area. That says, so we can structure cover it includes swimming pools. There's no reason for it to do that. And the A D Us are gonna be built, other things are gonna be built. And our laws are big enough so that it really doesn't make any difference if you have a swimming pool there. So my, my, uh, you know, I, I, I don't think we should include it, it doesn't make sense. I'm also concerned from the enforcement point of view, that if something like this happens. And uh, we, we decide later on, if the enforcement proceeding, that swimming pool should be removed. Uh, you, you have this little, uh, family with a couple of.
Uh, just, just a second, we're not talking about the enforcement that's coming up. I think we want to stay focused on the definition, that's, and to get to, to uh, Councilmember Craig's point earlier. Let's stay focused on, on what's on the agenda.
I, I, I appreciate it, point of view, but my, my exact point is. And uh, the ordinance does not stand by itself. It focuses on enforcement. And we are, when we are going to go to enforcing this ordinance. We're gonna make a, a mess out of Montessorino, and it'll be a new item, we'll have cranes out there trying to pull out a swimming pool. So let's not have an ordinance that's concluding the start rate. That causes us, gives us a bad name. You may also have litigation that may come up because of the conclusion in ordinance. I'm sitting on the record, this is a confusing ordinance. Our city council has stated it's a confusing ordinance, that's why we're clarifying it. Uh, I, I, and, and it's not consistent with the rest of the valley, so. My, my, I, I would vote no on accepting this uh, particular amendment of the second reading of uh, this ordinance. And I would also ask the uh, sta- staff to bring back an ordinance which clarified that uh, covered. Uh, structured coverage does not include pools and spas and things that don't have a roof on, on top of that.
Thank you for your comments. I didn't hear the question in there. Do you have a question?
Yeah, the question was that. The, okay, let's, let's leave it as a comment.
Okay, this is, okay. Other questions of council members? Councilmember Craig, go ahead.
I'm, I'm gonna take a crack. So based on what I heard tonight, this um, ordinance does not change. How it's enforced. We're just, we, we think that this ordinance may bring some clarification, but I guess. What was the ambiguity in the first ordinance? What, what, what did somebody come to the city and say, this isn't clear to me?
Um, I, I don't, I'm not aware, honestly, of anybody who's come to the city. I do get questions every day, I shouldn't say that for clarification of items, but um, this was, the clarifications were more um. Prompted by staff, um, than members of the public. The current definition um, of structure. Basically ends with just the first sentence here. So the current definition said, um, a structure means anything constructed or erected that requires location on the ground. Or attachment to something having location on the ground. So that could be interpreted to be. You know, a driveway. And, you know, an upgrade paved walking surface. So the intent of these clarifications is to state that a structure. So the intent of these clarifications is to state that a structure. Define better what a structure is and what it isn't. And then also clarify. Of those structures which are included in structural coverage. But it does not change our current practices. These definitions reflect our current practice.
Okay, so this is where it got really confusing to me. And that was. I read the comment letters that were submitted at the prior meetings. And the letters were in support of changing the language because they felt it would better help. And I'm sorry, but we're gonna have to bring up the matter that's going to come in front of the council later on. And they they seem to think that us changing this. Is going to benefit them. But based on what I'm hearing tonight, there's no change. So I would say we still have ambiguity if. Ten people submit this letter in in support. Specifically calling out the pending case that is going to come to the council. Am I correct in that assumption? All of the letters were in support. And also in support of the pending case that's going to come before the council.
And council number five may help answer that question. The city's existing definition of structure uh, in the current code uh, reads, structure means anything constructed or erected. The use of which requires location on the ground or attachment to something having location on the ground. For purposes of this chapter, swimming pools, spas and jacuzzis, whether constructed above or below grade. Which are capable of holding water to a depth of two feet or more shall be considered structures, subject to the city's building regulations. Equipment pertinent to the operation of swimming pools, spas and jacuzzis shall be treated as accessory uses. So that is our current definition of structure. Um, as the planner mentioned, the you know, that this ordinance is going to try to. Clarify exactly how. Those caveats in the definition of structure apply in practice. As a practical matter, the changes. That staff are proposing in the ordinance would mirror the city's existing practice and interpretation. And as a result of that, it would likely have no bearing on any. Uh, existing development project. Uh, or the status of any. You know, pending or impending uh, code enforcement actions.
Correct. Yeah, but I'm just trying to point out that. A lot of people seem to feel that we are relaxing of regulation. But that's really not the case. That's that's what I'm bringing up and and go to the council member Alahi's comment. We are not accomplishing what we set out to do here. By making these these modifications to the code.
That is correct. The city would not be relaxing any any development standards by adopting this ordinance. What it would be clarifying is. Um, this language in the definition of structure would talks about equipment pertinent to operation of swimming pools. Shall be treated as accessory uses. And it also be dealing with, uh, you know, this language that says that. Uh, you know, swimming pools, spas and jacuzzis are considered structures, subject to the city's building regulations. Instead. The city's ordinance would. Uh, and I'm pulling up the ordinance really quickly. It would revise that uh. To see, to state that that shall be included in structural coverage. And specifically says that, you know, ground mounted accessory equipment um. Is not included in structural coverage because that is. How staff have been interpreting the provision regarding accessory uses.
Okay, now the other thing that I heard in prior discussions with that was that this was going to bring us more in line. With our surrounding neighborhoods. But it doesn't sound like that that's actually what this is going to accomplish. We're still going to be separate and apart from Los Gatos, Surtoga, Campbell, et cetera. In terms of our definition of a swimming pool as a structure.
Um, that is correct. So that was um, previously discussed. Um, I believe it was. At the well, at several previous council meetings, and I think it was the November fifteenth council meeting. Where council provided direction to staff to keep the pool. In the um. Structural coverage calculations to not change that um, current requirement that we have. But to go ahead and um, propose an ordinance that clarifies the existing definitions.
Okay, and again, when a number of the public came and talked about that, they thought that this was a good idea because of what's going to bring us in. Come in and into the standards that are within the surrounding neighborhood. So again, I think that we are. Not solving the problem of ambiguity here. And I would now just like to go on the record to say that I support council member Alahi's proposal that. We remove swimming pools as a structure. Because it it really is not. Benefiting our residents right now. But I'm just supporting him. I know that's not part of the agenda.
Right, so what I'm hearing is. We've got the ordinance in place. And the proposal. Is that we. We amend, we change the definition only. So that it clarifies it. And makes it less am, so there's no ambiguity. And. We either vote in favor of changing it, or we don't vote in favor of changing it. And what I'm hearing you say is you can't support changing the language. So so therefore the existing language stands.
Correct. Thank you. Okay. And since this is the second reading, if we don't vote on it, then we would have to start from scratch or. And at a second reading, we say that we actually want to change the language or we're we're we've already passed that that possibility.
So the council can direct that the city make changes to this ordinance. Um, we would have to reintroduce it on first reading. Um, so that is something that the council can direct us to do is to change this ordinance.
Okay. Then then I would make a motion that we approve. The changes to the ordinance with the removal of swimming pools as a structure.
If if I may comment on that.
Go ahead. Well, no, no, this is where we're to ask questions, then we take a public comment. And then we come back for a discussion and then we look.
I'm sorry, that wasn't an official motion. That would be a motion that I would make when we're ready to get to the motion part of this. Sorry for that.
Now, we're, I would prefer that we ask questions, then we open public comment. Then we bring it back for staff or for for council member comments.
That's right, we do it.
Okay. Okay, other questions of council? If so, go ahead. None, then I will uh, bring it to open for public comment. If you're a member of the public. And you're attending virtually, please raise your virtual hand and we will recognize you. Any hands raised?
Yes, I have them. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes. You have three minutes.
Great. Thank you. Um, so my name is Stanley, Stanley Watt, and I moved into Montesano about in August. Um, I have two young kids. I live here with my wife and our house is the house at issue that has this enforcement um, issue so that everybody knows. First, I just want to thank everyone. Thank the city council for thinking about this. I know you spent a lot of time thinking and debating this. I want to thank the staff also. They've done previous reports on this and been very thorough. I just want to appreciate everyone for spending such time on thinking about this. Um, I think the few things that I want to talk about is like, I think what happened is that um. We inherited this problem. So we bought this house and the pool existed and I guess it exceeds structural coverage. So we inherited this problem. And so um, I know there, I think there was some confusion on the seller when building the pool. I don't know if there's confusion, but clearly something happened. In that process and um, they they built a pool that exceeded structural coverage. And so the suggestion was that maybe it might be intense to change the ordinance so that pools are not part of structural coverage. And so there are a few arguments for why that may be the case. One is I I would think from my humble opinion that a natural reading of structural coverage probably doesn't include pools. Like I think if you asked most general people what the structure is, I'm not sure they would necessarily come to think of as pool since it doesn't have a roof. Or really any walls that are are above ground. The second, as we've mentioned before, staff did a great comprehensive review. And they showed that most of our peer towns don't consider pools as part of structural coverage. And so Montesano is a bit unique. Um, one argument is that we can be unique, like maybe we should have a different rule, but it would be really good if we had a compelling reason for why our rule is different. And through no fault of anyone on its own, I think this structural coverage definition was created a long time ago. And no one on the current city council or our current staff actually remember why there's this distinction. So it's hard to know exactly if we were to have a distinction, why it would exist. The other thing is that when this was presented to the city council in, I think, August. About whether we should exclude pools from structural coverage, the staff actually recommended after their research that city council remove pools from structural coverage. I don't think the city council voted that way, but I think it's worth noting that the staff actually did recommend that pools be removed from structural coverage after their analysis. The other thing is, I think some of you seen, there are a lot of residents, there are a lot of letters right now that have suggested that it really be beneficial for the residents if we could remove. Pools from structural coverage. And so I would really respectfully um, ask city council to reconsider whether we could remove pools from structural coverage. From what I recall on in August, um, the vote that shows not to remove structural coverage. Some of the arguments were about around protecting the watershed and things like that. I do agree, those are very, very important um, considerations and very reasonable considerations. But I would also note that I think at least at that meeting, those are arguments that were made without really a lot of analysis. I don't think there was a lot of discussion about how much water needs to be. Uh, gathered, what the watershed should look like. So I would just ask. Uh, city council respectfully if they would reconsider this ordinance to remove pools from structural coverage. That would be really helpful. Thank you so much. I always appreciate your time and all the work that you guys do for us.
Thank you. Um, I've got a question for you. And my question relates to your statement where you inherited this problem. And I think. The history on this. You have to go back uh, and go through the videos. But. So my first question is, did you buy your property with this with knowing that the structural coverage? Had been exceeded and the pool was not allowed to be built?
I'm I'm asking, I'm allowed to ask a question relating to the statement that he made.
I I'm happy to answer. I I'm happy to answer. I I have nothing to hide, so I'm happy to answer. So if I can give a chronology, this is what happened. This was back in April of twenty twenty-two. Um, and during that time, the housing market was relatively was pretty feverish, I would say. And so the brokers collected bids on a certain period. And so during that period, let's usually have this deadline like seven or eight P M. By a certain date, please submit your bid. So that's what we did. We submitted a bid and I don't recall completely, but maybe there are about seven or eight bids that were uh, presented. Then they said, okay, there are seven or eight bids. We're gonna do a second round. You, we got selected into the second round. They're like, do you want to revise your bid? So then we revised our bid and they said the bid is due at like, I don't know, ten or eleven P M. So then we have like three or four hours to try to figure out to whether to revise the bid. To revise the bid. After our revision of the bid, we got a call back from the broker, from the selling broker saying, hey, we just got a letter from the city saying the pool uh. Like there's a violation of the pool. And in the disclosure statements, they did talk about the pool not being permitted, but then there does a discussion from the letter from the city. Uh, in the intervening hours between our final bid. And since everything was so feverish, we didn't really think that carefully about all of this. And then we said, you know, whatever, we'll just like, keep our bid the way it is. And so that that's what happened. So I think the technical answer to uh, the mayor's question is. I don't think I can say that, oh, I didn't realize that this was done at all, or this was in violation. I would argue that it's still inherited problem because we didn't initially. Violate this or anything like that. And in the heat of the of the real estate discussions during that time. It was a very difficult thing for us to decide in uh, with relatively large sums of money and very, very small amounts of time. I'm happy to take any more clarification.
Thank you. Um, I think the other. Statements that you made, I understand them. So I don't have any other. Uh, questions of of your public comment. Okay, um. Do we have any other uh, public comment? If so, please raise your virtual hand. I will close public comment and bring it back to uh. Counsel now for discussion and comment. So uh, council member Alahi, you seem to want to have a comment. Go ahead, please.
I know, I I appreciate it. And uh. I I guess I look at this as more like an attorney, uh, which. After forty years of practice, sometimes you get in your real doing the right thing as well. Um, but first thing, just on the sort of the background, Mr. Watt gave us on the pool. At the first hearing, there was a contractor. Representative who showed up and basically stated that he understood that in the pool, structure coverage would not come in. Uh, into play and that. There was a permit issue, but not that the whole thing would have been removed, which it may or may not have to be. Secondly, I think we're confusing the definitions in the original ordinance. But my my belief in the pool was not a part of the structured coverage definition. It was part of the coverage definition. And the administration had been to, they consider it as also being such a coverage. And the problem is, well, putting it in the structured coverage definition, is that where your footage a lot uh. Limitations come into being. If it's just a courage, it doesn't affect it. It's a structured coverage that's where we have that.
Hold on, attorney Bruton, would you like to say something?
Yeah, I you know, I I understand that council members are, you know, responding to. Issues that are raised in public comment, but I would like to remind the council that the. That the enforcement matter is not currently on the agenda and that we really shouldn't be devoting substantive time to discussion. Of uh, any pending code enforcement case right now. Uh, obviously, the council can continue to debate the merits of. The ordinance that has been presented and what you folks would like to do with respect to whether you want to adopt it or change it.
Alright, so so the point I was making is that the original ordinance. Pool was not in the structural coverage definition, it was in the coverage definition. But it was interpreted by staff as being part of the structured coverage. That's why the issue came up that it should be clarified. Now that the clarification has come in, uh, I I I appreciate the also number things uh. Proposed motion uh, basically uh. Regarding a clarification on what is structural coverage, however. Is basically saying that pools should be outside. Uh, the the mission director, we should not, so my 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 motion would be, if I was to make it. Is that we should not approve the second reading. We will go back to whatever the legal definition is confusing as it may be. And then with definitely direction to staff to come up with an ordinance. That specifically excludes swimming pools and spas and those kind of things that can ever. As not being part of the structured coverage. So that there is no confusion. And and council member Craig is right, all these letters that have come in. We also all support the proposition that who should not be part of the structured coverage. But they seem to support the second reading, so there's some confusion there. So just to clarify. Uh, not approve the second reading. And then direct staff to uh, come back with an ordinance that clarify that pools are not considered structured structural coverage.
Do you like to make uh, these, this is time for comments by council members. Council member Craig, you seem to be ready to make the card.
Yes, please get rid of the bird feeders. That just looks silly. What does it say? Bird or bird fountains or something in there? I I broke out laughing when I read that. So did some other people.
That's that's our system.
I know, but we, and why would we want to deny Monty a beautiful place to have a bird?
Do you have other?
I I don't, I I don't.
Okay, I see that. Why, pardon me?
I am in support of council members alive.
I see that Vice Mayor Walshimer has his hand up. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Alright, let me unmute here. I would like to make a motion that we approve the second reading. Of the ordinance because we are not changing the rules. We're just clarifying the rules and I fully support that. I'm completely against removing pools from the ordinance. Because I can foresee tremendous problems with that. People could maximize the house. On their on their lot. And I built a fifty meter pool in addition to. And and thus cover a hundred percent of their of their area with impervious. Uh, materials. And a pool is impervious. I don't want there to be any confusion about that. Uh, unless you have a really bad contractor, but the pool is an impervious area. I want to say one sentence about Mr. Watts' pool. Even if we change. The rules and allow pool uh, uh, remove. Pools from the language. Does that retroactively? Make that pool compliant? I don't think it does. We can, we can change the rules going. We can, we can change the rules going forward, but not going backwards. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay, well, I'll do two things. I will second your motion. And then I'll make a comment that when I built my pool, and I can go back to the calculations in the actual document, but it was patently clear to the contractor that submitted my pool plans, what was included in structural coverage and what wasn't. And I'm pretty sure that contractor did a lot of work in the city of Montesereno. So I'll, so we've got a motion and a second.
I just want to put a few.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Is it concerned that the vice mayor, Wolfheimer, has on impervious coverage? We have a separate ordinance that covers how much impervious coverage you can have. So that, that, that really is not going to happen. Remember that impervious coverage limitations will be already included in that. That's why we're doing it forward here by putting pools in those things also. But you have a motion on the floor, we can vote on that motion and then, if, if, and then that fails, I will make up to the motion that I was presenting. But I guess I can still make a motion, even there's a pending motion.
I believe you can make a motion. And if it receives a second, then that takes precedent over the original motion. We vote on that first, and if it passes, then the second one is is irrelevant.
Yeah, so not only make an amendment, but my amendment to this motion would be not to approve the ordinance, which is directly contradictory to the motion itself. So if it's appropriate, then then I either do an amendment to the motion or make a new motion that the present ordinance, the redrafted ordinance not be approved. And that staff be directed to come back with an ordinance that provides that swimming pools and spas and similar items are not to be considered part of structural coverage.
So we've, we've got a motion. I'd like City Attorney Bruton to opine on whether we can direct staff in a motion that that is part of another, that's not a single element. If you could just briefly opine on that, that would be extremely helpful.
So typically, under Roberts' rules, and I believe this, you know, the city's rules for motion practice, typically you can, you make a main motion. If you want to amend that motion, you can make a second motion to amend that motion. I would say with the gist of councilmember Lawhey's motion, I, I think his earlier suggestion to just have a second motion after voting on the first motion would probably be simpler. He can make that motion if the first, if the current motion on the floor does not pass. Let, please let me know if that is acceptable to you folks, because.
Yes, so, so just to clarify, can he make a motion that's, oh, so can he make a motion to direct staff to come back with an ordinance? Is that a motion or is that a direction that we would look to the majority of council to, to direct staff?
So if the first motion fails, he could introduce a motion that would be to not approve the second reading and to direct staff to come back with an revisions to this ordinance that implement his desired policy direction.
So exactly as you stated. Okay. Well, so we're voting on the first motion.
We're just voting on the first motion right now, but it's the room to say a second reading. Yeah, that's the motion on the floor, which is the one we're.
Yes.
Motion made by Vice Mayor and seconded by Mayor, so we did both.
Roll call, please.
So, and clerk, I'm hoping you can restate what the motion is that they are voting on, so that they are clear.
A waiver of the second reading and action of the ordinance number. And as to three degree and ordinance of the city council of the city of Montesereno amending section ten point zero one point zero two zero definitions, specific terms.
So this would be a motion to approve the ordinance as included in the staff report.
Councilmember Turner.
I would say that the pool should not be included as part of the structural coverage, so I vote no.
Councilmember Craig.
No.
Councilmember Lawhey.
No.
Vice Mayor Wolfheimer.
Yes.
And Mayor Megachuck.
Yes, motion fails. Would you like to make a motion, Councilmember Aladi?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. Yeah, I'd like to move that the direct staff to come back with an ordinance that specifically provides that pools and spas and similar items are not part of the structured coverage.
And I will second that.
I would ask for a friendly amendment to that.
Please ask.
I would ask staff to recommend how we could amend our impervious coverage requirements so that we would not have a significant amount of impervious coverage by the removal of swimming pools from structural coverage so that the intent of where we were before stays the same. That would be my, so, so my concisely, my friendly amendment would be to, as you're, as you stated, and then say, and further direct staff to analyze and propose a change in the impervious coverage ratio.
I appreciate the friendly amendment. My suggestion would be to treat them separate. The first order that would come in would just have to do with the pools that aren't being part of the structure. And then also, so this was directed to the staff, what is to do in ordinance on the pool definition itself. And the second direction that Mayor Megachuck would like you to look at is that the previous coverage definitions, if they are going to be impacted because we are not, not considering pools as part of it, whether we need to reduce the limits on those things. But I would ask that those two be treated as separate items and not not be part of the same discussion. But we can move forward with the, you know, issue that's causing confusion now, get that done. And, and both those things can be brought up at the same time. It's time to.
Okay, so, so let me hear if I understand you correctly. Yours that you don't accept my friendly amendment, but I can make a separate motion asking what I asked, requested in the friendly amendment.
Absolutely.
Okay, I'm good with that. Now, we've got a motion, a friendly amendment that's not accepted, and we've got a second. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Councilmember Lawhey.
Yes.
Councilmember Turner.
Definitely yes.
Councilmember Craig.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wolfheimer.
No.
Mayor Megachuck.
I will vote yes. And I'll make a new motion based on that acceptance of the motion. So motion carries. I will make a motion that we direct staff to analyze structural coverage and recommend changes to that structural coverage that would compensate for the removal of swimming pools from structural coverage by reduction, an appropriate reduction in the impervious coverage to allow the absorption of water into our underground aquifers to, to maintain sufficient water in set in, in the city of Montesereno underground aquifers. Go ahead.
Can I rephrase that real quick to see if I understand what you're.
Sure, sure.
Go ahead, please. So I think you're asking staff to come back with a report on the impacts of removing the swimming pools from structural coverage by analyzing the impervious coverage requirements that we currently have. Because I think when you take a look at that, you're not going to see any any great difference there. And I, and I think the goal being again, to make sure we don't run into the situation that Councilmember Wolfheimer talked about, which is people abusing what we're doing by, you know, filling out their lot with a giant swimming pool. Is that correct?
Yeah, yes, yes and no. I, so based on my calculations, when I've gone through and built a swimming pool, I was allowed to build a pool of a certain size and include impervious coverage surrounding that. So for example, the pool decks, impervious coverage, et cetera. And there's a limit on that because when it rains, you want the water to soak into the ground so that, so that it refreshes the underground aquifers and and we maintain the rural heritage nature of Montesereno. So if you look at other jurisdictions, they don't include swimming pools in structural coverage, but their impervious coverage calculations are different. So it's a compensating element. So if you remove if part from one part of quote, the overall calculations, you have to see how does it affect the other calculation? And I'm merely asking for staff to do that analysis. And if it turns out that it's, it's all equal, then what that would tell me is that the city of Montesereno allows less impervious coverage overall than our, than our surrounding jurisdictions.
And, and I would also like to suggest, based on my comment at the last meeting, that this is a great place to put some really good detailed graphs and drawings and scenarios. Yeah, so that we can help make a informed decision on this topic.
I think that our, our residents, one of the things that I've heard over the past year is they would prefer to have similar ordinances going across jurisdictions so that where you, if you're in Montesereno and next door, for example, on Populay, your, your Los Gatos, that it's easier to say, we're all similar.
Yes. I'm sorry, ask staff, are you getting, is there a motion that just says, give us an ordinance that does not include pool as part of the coverage?
I got that. The rest I'll have to go back.
A report, basically, saying what impact that has, is going to have on impervious. Right now, the swimming pools are considered part of impervious coverage.
Correct. So the swimming pool is included in structural coverage, which essentially includes any roofed area. So the footprint of the house, any accessory structures, any if you had a covered harbor or a covered gazebo area. So anything essentially that has a roof and the pool is included in feature in structural coverage. An impervious coverage includes that total structural coverage plus all of your paved area.
Okay, that's a separate report that you're asking.
Oh, I see. Council, or sorry, Vice Mayor Wolfheimer has his hand up. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, I'd like to make one additional comment. Before I moved to Montesereno, I lived in one of the other cities that were mentioned, and my neighbors had maxed out the house on their lot and they built a swimming pool in their backyard. And the way to access the swimming pool was to open the sliding door in the back of the house and and walk into the pool. The pool was about two feet from the sliding doors and two feet from the fences. And it was completely following the rules of that city. So I think we need to be very careful what we allow and do not allow here.
I hear you. We've got a motion on the table. We don't have a second yet.
I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Yeah. Councilmember Craig.
Yes.
Councilmember Lawhey.
And just to be clear, the motion is basically for staff to give a report on what effect putting pools in the structured coverage area. Removing that more structure coverage you have on the various.
And, and a resulting recommended change to the percentage if required.
Well, yeah, okay. Yes.
Councilmember Turner.
Could you, could you say the motion again, please? Sergio.
So, and I'm going to defer to the clerk here. Because this is, this is technically the clerk's job. But as I understand the motion, the motion is, is that it is directing staff to study the change that is proposed with respect to structural coverage and analyze what changes to impervious coverage may be necessary in order to necessary or recommended in terms of limiting the development of swimming pools so that there is not significantly more development of swimming pools than will be otherwise allowed under the city's existing zoning rules.
That is the intent of, of my motion. Does that help you, Councilmember Turner?
Yes, thank you for that shortened, that shortened sentence.
So that was a yes, Councilmember Turner? I'm sorry.
Are you talking to me?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify. You said yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Wolfheimer?
Yes.
And Mayor Megachuck.
I, motion carries. With that, we can move forward to new business, I believe. And under new business, we have discuss and provide directions to staff regarding possible bingo ordinance. Maybe we have a staff report on that, please?
Yes, good evening again. This item was brought up at the December twentieth, twenty twenty two city council meeting. Councilmember Craig had requested that a possible, or discussion of a possible bingo ordinance be placed for discussion at a future council meeting. A big California state law allows bingo activities to occur where a city has enacted an ordinance in accordance with the state law. The state law regulates the types of organizations that can operate bingo games, location where bingo games can be held, staffing, how proceeds can be used, the law of the mandates that games are open to the public and that bingo games are to be attended in person. If the city were to establish a bingo ordinance, the permitted location for such activities would either be the First Baptist Community Church site or perhaps City Hall if the facilities were rented to a qualifying organization. And ordinance would also establish an application and licensing process. Earlier today, the city did receive an email from the pastor of the First Baptist Community Church stating that the church does not have any interest or future plans for bingo games at their facility. This email was forwarded to the council members and published with the agenda for tonight's meeting. So staff recommends that the city council provide direction regarding a possible ordinance to regulate bingo games in the city. And that concludes the staff report.
Thank you. Do we have questions by council of staff? Go ahead. Councilmember Aladi.
Has anybody approached the city to allow them to play bingo game? And the Baptist church has worked at the pool?
At this time, we are not aware of any inquiries requesting bingo.
Can the city have its own bingo game? Host a bingo game under this order?
The city of Montesereno would have to adopt policy language and do all the items recommended by the state law in order to host our own game. We would have to abide by those laws just as any other agency would, but there would be a question for the city attorney.
No, the answer is no.
That's the answer we're looking for, I suppose. Whether that would be legal or not. Whether that would be legal or not, and, and as public entity, even in a community room.
Uh, under, under, under state law, uh, the city has to adopt an ordinance authorizing bingo. Uh, within the city's jurisdiction and regulating it. Uh, the only entities that the city can allow to conduct bingo games are tax-exempt organizations. Uh, mobile home park associations, senior citizens organizations, and charitable organizations affiliated with the school district. So the city itself cannot conduct a bingo game. The city can, uh, either rent out or allow the use of City Hall for these kinds of organizations to conduct bingo games in the city's jurisdiction. Um, but that would basically be it.
Thank you. If I could just follow.
Go ahead.
What, what kind of resources of the city you require to. Dedicate to its, uh, you can give permit for bingo games or monitoring them or whatever the state requires. Is that? Something we need to budget for, or is that just the.
Um, it, it would be an application and a permit process. Um, I believe most cities have a. On three-year or five-year renewal of such a license. Um, the state law does. Say that the maximum application fee to the city is fifty dollars.
Thank you.
Well. Oh, you'll wait for the comment. Okay, and I saw that Councilmember, uh, Turner had her hand raised. Do you have a question, or do you wanna wait for the, oh, you do have your hand raised. Go ahead, please.
Well, I was, I was gonna say that. I, 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 I don't understand what the impetus is. For legalizing. Uh, bingo. In the city. Cause if you were to look at the, the revenue that we will get from. From a community center like this, it's gonna be fifty dollars. For every license and that's, that's, that's very little. And the amount of energy, the software that you're gonna put in there, the operations cost, the hours is, is gonna be. You know, very expensive. If you look at, uh, if you look online to see how many cities actually have bingo. In their community center, you have San Jose and Milpitas. And the cities around us don't. So.
Your question, this is a time for questions, what?
I just wanted to make a comment if I could, please, and those were my comments. Thank you so much.
So, so Councilmember Turner, what, what I'm trying to do. As we go through our agenda is. We have a staff report and then council asks questions. And then we open the public, a public hearing. We bring it back to council and then we have comments. And if required, we then give direction to staff or we have a motion if it requires action. So I think in the, in the orderly conduct of a meeting, it would be good to, to follow that. Through the year, if that's.
So my question was really the, the first sentence that I brought up. Why is this being brought up? Why do we have? The, um, bingo games as part of the community center. Can, can, can you, what's the impetus?
Thank you.
I, I do have a question.
Yeah, just, just. Right, right after, yes, understood. Uh, staff?
I will, uh, attempt to answer that question. So there has not been determined. Any such use for the community center. Uh, essentially, this item is on the agenda this evening at the request of a Monastirino Councilmember, Councilmember Craig. As per our city code reads, any council member could request any item go on the agenda at any time. Staff went back and, uh, did the research, put the report together, compared ourselves to other agencies, provided the data about the state law. What would be required if? And who could play bingo in the city of Montesereno?
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Craig, go ahead.
Thank you. My question is, uh, we are not looking to limit where a particular bingo game can be played, correct? So it could be at somebody's house that they wanted to have it at their house, correct?
According to the state law, I don't believe it would be technically legal to. We would not be able to issue a permit to have it at a residence, a personal residence. Now, if somebody invited their family over on a Friday night and played bingo, they could probably do that, like. They probably played poker or bet on the Super Bowl or whatever they do at their, their home parties. But there wouldn't be, say, a sanctioned or licensed event by the city of Montesereno, according to the state law, where they could. Play bingo in their home. Um, we believe that the only entity that we would have any jurisdiction over would be essentially the, the church. The Baptist Church on Davis Avenue. Um, even the school district, um, has their own jurisdiction. Um, and as Mr. Ruten alluded to, if somebody wanted to potentially rent out. You know, a public facility. Um, should we have facility and perhaps, um. Request to play bingo, we would obviously, um. Potentially be able to do that if we had a licensing structure to do that. Um, as was mentioned, it may not be fiscally feasible. Because there is quite a bit of work and reporting and licensing and, um. Issuing, you know, taking the applications, all those things involved with it by staff. So, uh, it would not be a money-making business for us. That's not why we would be pursuing, uh, this endeavor. In staff's opinion.
And just to supplement, uh, city manager's answer here, uh, because state law. Limits the kind of organizations that can lawfully conduct bingo games. Uh, to nonprofits and certain charitable organizations. Um, our city zoning code prohibits the operation, like business operations within residential zoning districts and. The, this kind of fundraising use and bingo operation would likely be prohibited under the city zoning code. Which is not to say the council can't change it. But understanding that if you wanna allow these nonprofit type organizations and, uh, you know. To operate bingo games within a single-family zoning district that have to be by law open to the general public. Uh, you know, you, you may have some, some. Issues with incompatible uses and, you know, neighbor complaints, you know, for folks that are. You know, operating a large bingo fundraiser, you know, next door. So. Obviously, if the council does decide to. Uh, you know, move forward with enacting a bingo ordinance, one thing for you folks to consider is gonna be. Do you want to allow it in residential zoning districts, or do you want to only limit it to, say, City Hall and. You know, similar type of public assembly facilities, so.
Okay, thank you. Other questions of staff before I open it for public comment? Or sorry, I, I do have to open it for public comment. So before we give direction to staff, other questions? No, no. Okay, I'll open this for public comment. If you're a member of the public and you wish to comment on this item, please raise your virtual hand. No hands are raised. I'll close public comment, bring it back to council for direction to staff. Would we like to give, what type of direction do we want to give staff on this?
I, I, I guess it's. It could, it could eventually become a direction to staff, but we'll probably comment amongst each other as to what.
Sure, let's have a discussion.
So, so the bingo, bingo item, I mean. It's kind of an evil item for an offense, and I would just be curious though, uh. Our Baptist minister Roger McCarthy sent a letter in saying, uh. The church is not gonna do bingo. They're not interested in bingo. They're gonna stay away from it as far as possible. And I'm, I'm just a little concerned about whether it's gonna be more staff time, more people you can monitor. Uh, and if the citizens of Montesereno aren't really clamoring for it. I'm, I'm very concerned with the legal document, so it's not at this time. Until we have, someone is interested, and nobody's interested in it. And we put it in place and then someone will come in and say, I want to play bingo, that we wanna say, hey, stay away from us, man, we don't need you. So that's definitely my concern.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead, Councilmember Craig.
Thank you. So I, I brought this matter forward. Because one of our residents, uh, who's, who also is a volunteer, actually, no, she's the executive director at KCAT. Has been taking a look at fundraising opportunities in the West Valley area. And currently Saratoga has a bingo ordinance. And in conjunction with West Valley Community Services, they already run a bingo game there. And they have invited KCAT to participate with them there. And KCAT has also worked with the town of Los Gatos. So that they've now enacted an ordinance that will allow bingo games to be held there. Now again, they're a larger city, so they have more public facilities. They could have them at the history club, they could have them at the Los Gatos Rec Center. And so on and so forth. And so it was asked of me if Monte Serena could just kind of join and we have one contiguous. Bingo gambling area here. And, um, and so I brought it forward, but I was not aware that. A private residence could not host a wine tasting and bingo night. I did not know that that was. Not allowed under the current ordinance and, uh. But it was also brought up that with the community center opening up a book club. Reading or a bingo game, you're still using the facility for X amount of hours. And so that was one of the reasons that I was being asked to take a look at bringing a bingo ordinance into the, uh, into the city. Um, the other cities have reported it's, it's a minimal financial impact on them. And I don't think it would be a big financial impact on us and, you know, maybe open up the place to have a little fun around here.
So just let me probe a little bit, since it's a discussion. At this point in time, since we don't really have a feasible place to host it. Do you think we should direct staff to continue to pursue this, or should we revisit this item? In, say, a year?
I, I think we can revisit it if, if, uh, unless there's something that we missed about. Where we can actually host a game, but since it doesn't seem like we have any applicable venues. Um, then I'm, I'm willing to, to, uh, table this for a while.
Okay, so you're saying. You, we should direct staff, we, we thank them for the report.
Yep.
And we will address it if the opportunity arises in the future.
Yes.
Okay, uh, other comments by, uh, council members of the discussion before we give directions to staff? Hearing none, then I think that. What I'm hearing from Councilmember Alahi, Councilmember Craig, and myself is at this point in time. It seemed like it was a good idea, but it seems like it's not gonna have the benefits at this point in time. So we should revisit it in, in the future. Uh, is that sufficient direction for staff?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, with that, we can close the item and move to the next item in new business. Which is. Discuss and provide direction to staff regarding a switch from gas-powered leaf blowers to electric or battery-powered. Leaf blowers. May we have a staff report on that, please?
Yes, thank you. Um, this item was also orig- originally brought up at the December twentieth. Um, city council meeting by the vice mayor. Who requested, um, that this be placed on sole agenda for future discussion. Um, of change, possibly changing the city's regulation to prohibit gas-powered leaf blowers. And only allow electric or battery-powered leaf blowers. Um, within the city limits. In October twenty twenty-one, the governor signed AB one three four six. Which will ban the sale of new gas-powered leaf blowers, lawn mowers, hedge, hedge trimmers and edgers. Um, starting with units that are manufactured in twenty twenty-four. Um, although this law does ban the manufacturing and sale of gas-powered equipment. Use of existing gas-powered equipment will not be restricted. Um, within Santa Clara County, uh, the town of Los Gatos, the city of Los Altos. And the city of Palo Alto have all banned the use of gas-powered leaf blowers. Staff recommends, um, that the city council provide direction. Um, regarding the desire for an ordinance to, um, restrict the use of gas-powered leaf blowers within the city. And that concludes the staff report.
Okay, so, uh, we've got a staff report. If we could ask some, some questions of staff. That would be good. And then I'd like to open public comment and then bring it back to council for comment. Questions for staff. I see that, uh, Vice Mayor Wolchimer has his hand raised. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um. I have some comments, which I'll save for later, but I have one question, uh, from staff. Are you familiar with the California State voucher program? For, um, equipment replacement like this? Uh, where gardeners and landscapers can pay and get a seventy percent discount. On purchase of electrical equipment that replaces a gas-powered equipment. Are you familiar with that voucher program?
Yes, in looking up the, um, information about the state regulations, um, I, I did see that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Question, yes, can you direct up the details on that? I mean. Uh, I, I'm a gardener who's been doing this for the last many years. If I ask him to replace with electrical, uh, Rory's gonna probably quit. But, uh, what, what are the details of the voucher program? Maybe you can send some. Information to all of us, uh, to our residents also. Uh, the, we already have in place a sound limit. And it's sixty-five decibels or something. Uh. And my question is, are we enforcing that at all? Have we had any complaints about people going over sixty-five dB? And is that, uh, uh, or should we be changing that to a lower number if there's a noise issue? Uh, cause the issue isn't whether, I mean, obviously the gas and that has an environmental concept also, and we need to. But switching to electrical, uh, uh, appliances. Uh, but if it's a sound issue, do we need to alter them to found a, uh, decibel that should be in place?
Um, to your first question about the number of complaints, um, I would say the complaints about leaf blowers, um, are infrequent. We, I would say over the past year, we've probably had two or three such complaints. That are, um, followed up on by the city's code enforcement officer. And the, and there were most of the complaints. That we've received, as I recall, is leaf blowers operating outside of the allowed hours.
My next question was, uh, on the decimal noise level, that ordinance provides a sixty-five dB or seventy decibel. Um. Rating also.
The sixty-five decibels is pretty typical of ordinances from other cities within the county. So that is sort of a, a standard. And then the, um. As our ordinance notes, on that, that decibel level is measured at fifty feet from the equipment. It's also. Um, pretty typical of, of other jurisdictions.
And so the question is, uh, should we be looking at reducing that if there's a noise issue? Or, uh, once here, it's probably a fairly large scale. And the big, uh, uh, parts of their fairly large. Obviously, the, the brewer should only be used between the required hours. And the decibel number should be, if that's, if you only had infrequent complaints. And again, you're telling me that those are because they're being used at other than, you know, normally allowed hours. But it's, it doesn't sound like we have a gas or noise issue right now. Uh, but we may have a tendency to create a leaky appliance in the city, so. So, then that's, uh, so if you go to the, well, we're here for now.
I, I do have a question. Go ahead, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Uh, so my question is, if somebody were to complain about a noisy. Yard appliance. From my understanding of prior staff. Before any action could really be taken. A code enforcement officer would need to be freed up, go to that person's residence. Get within fifty feet and actually be holding a decibel meter before any type of, of code enforcement action could be taken. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And, and it has to be running at the time that the guy is standing there. And I bring this up, and this is probably the comment part of the question. Um, because I think most people know that. And they just kind of throw their hands up and go, it doesn't make any difference if I call. But I just wanted to verify that. By the time that happens, if the, if, if there is no use of a gas appliance at that time. Above sixty-five decibels, then it's kind of a, sorry, we can't help you.
I would think in the example that.
I would think in the example that you stated, if it were an ongoing basis, for instance. A garden, garden service shows up same time every week, neighbor complains the first week. If the code enforcement person is not able to get out there, we are small, one point six square miles, but if they were not able to go out to the scene. And measure uh, while that individual was still uh, blowing. Or or whatever the the mowing or edging, whatever it was, um, and measure the noise. Um, I'm sure that, you know, they could plan to try to measure subsequently, you know, in the next scheduled time.
That's good to know we would do that.
We have now a code enforcement person on staff versus before we had a contract code enforcement. Person so that. We do have greater enforcement now for noise complaints and we do have a decibel reader. We bought one of those as well.
Okay, I hope there's members of the public listening. We have a decibel reader. Do we have other questions of staff? We have no other questions of staff. Um, if you're a member of the public and you'd like to make a comment on this, I'm opening public comment. Please raise your virtual hand.
We have Mr. Mark Billwalla.
Uh, go ahead. Mr. Billwalla.
Okay, I'm. Competing because I just recently spoke to a uh. Gardener who works for the San Jose Unified School District. And we were talking about gas powered blowers versus electric. And right now. Gas powered blowers have an advantage, electric don't, and that is that you can run them for a long time without a lot of downtime. And if it's your job. Um, it's gonna make it very difficult if you've got to carry and expensive, if you've got to carry a ton of batteries and keep them charged all the time. And right now. Gas powered blowers. Presumably when I talk about noise, because electrics are about the same noise. Sixty five decibel for backpack and seventy for hand carry. Uh, maybe you're talking about not wanting to burn gas in the environment and use electric. And to the extent that electricity is generated by solar, yes, it's cleaner. But California has an ordinance that that electric cars are, the only ones can be sold brand new in California after twenty thirty five. That's great. Do we want to improve that? Should we say in modest, we know you can only buy an electric car after twenty thirty or twenty twenty five? Right now, California has an ordinance relating to gas powered blowers and they're phasing them out. Why is it that? You are considering or seem to want to. Implement something that is on a faster pace than the state of California, and that is going to hurt. A lot of people who don't make very much money, who work their asses off. Um. I don't understand that. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is if you would like to make. A comment, please raise your virtual hand. Do we have any more hands raised? No. Uh, I will close public comment on this and bring it back to council for comment. Um. Vice Mayor Wiltshire, go ahead, please.
Hey, I have a few comments I'd like to make. Um. The California from July first, twenty twenty four will prohibit the sale of uh, of these uh. Of of gas powered equipment. That includes lawn mowers, by the way, it's not just uh, leaf blowers. Los Gatos has had. An ordinance in place for almost ten years since twenty fourteen. Palo Alto has one. Uh, which is very interesting, actually, where the property owner will be held responsible, not the gardener. It's the property owner. That has to enforce the rules, which I think is much more realistic. Um, they've also increased the fines, by the way. Uh, so why, why am I in favor of doing this? Well, the noise, um. I've talked to my gardener, I've I've had. He he showed me both his gas powered leaf blower and the electrical one, and there is a big difference. Um, I've, I've failed to believe that any of the gas power powered leaf blowers meet our city ordinance of sixty five dBs at fifty feet. I just don't believe it. Um, another reason why I'm in favor of this is uh, the pollution. Uh, a lot of particulate matter. Uh, comes out of these gas powered equipments, uh, carbon monoxide gas. Unburned fuel, which is a carcinogen. Other small forming compounds, it goes on and on and on. So how bad are they really? Well, there there are two kinds of uh, gas powered leaf blowers, uh. So called two stroke and four stroke. Two stroke are by far the worst. They. Running that for twenty minutes is the same as driving. A midsize car for twenty five hundred miles. Um, a four stroke is the same for twenty minutes, it's the same as running a car for three hundred and fifty miles. So. It's bad news for all the people who bought a uh, an electric car recently because all their great work and investment. Is being undone by. Their gardener blowing a gas powered leaf blower for twenty minutes. Um, you can make an easy calculation. The average car in the U S drives seventeen thousand miles. Uh. Twenty minutes per week of a leaf blower. Is just about the same amount, so. All the investment in electric cars is being negated and undone by your gardener's leaf blower blowing for just twenty minutes a week. So. I did a calculation also on what the impact of Montes Reno would be. Uh. We have twelve hundred homes. Let's say half of them have a gardener, six hundred have a gardener. Probably more than that, but let's assume six, six hundred. The gardener blowing for twenty minutes a week. That's per year, an equivalent of ten million miles driven in a car. So that's how bad all of this is. And I I can want to mention the voucher program, um. Uh, Omar mentioned that the uh, the investment is huge for gardeners. Uh, well, they can get a seventy percent discount from the state. And I offered my gardener uh, to pay the other thirty percent, so. That's what I'm doing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I'll weigh in with with my comments and my observations. Um. I did not, first of all, I didn't know the statistics for two stroke versus four stroke, how bad it is. I did know it was bad, but I didn't understand the magnitude. My comments are. A few years ago, when I believe this came in front of council. I was kind of on the fence on this item and I was thinking, you know, Monte Sereno has a lot of. One acre parcels and half acre parcels and battery technology really wasn't there. Where you could get the power and the time so that it was feasible. And I thought, okay, we're not there yet. But today, in the past year, two years, the cost of battery powered. Uh, leaf blowers has gone down. And the performance has gone up. So I think they're feasible now when they weren't feasible before. Um, when I looked at this, I say, okay. Like, we should provide some sort of leadership, I believe. Um. And but I do understand making a transition for a gardener from gas powered. To uh, battery or electric powered, and I'll say battery because I think having cords is not feasible, so I didn't include that in electric. Um. And I would think that we could give direction to staff to come up with an ordinance that would take effect January first, twenty twenty. Four, so it would give our existing gardeners a transition period in a business case. For saying, hey, how many of my customers are affected? And maybe it makes sense for me to make that investment. And it could be offset by the uh, seventy percent uh, rebate or whatever program it is that uh. Uh, Vice Mayor Wiltshire was referring to, so. I would be supportive of directing staff to come back uh, with an ordinance that would, proposed ordinance that would have an effective date. Of January first. The other thing that I will say. Is that when I'm working in my home office. And there's someone that is not very far away, and I live in R one eight, I I'm not in the R one twenty or the R one forty four. So I'm in the smaller area and if someone's in the backyard of one or two houses away. It's pretty disturbing to me during during the day, and that's not even on a weekend. So. I I think that that. Uh, Vice Mayor Wiltshire, your observation that the sixty five decibels is exceeded. I would agree with that, and I'll tell you, you have to go from a front yard to a backyard, and when that leaf blower is going between the houses in R one eight, where they're pretty close together. It's really noisy and it's is painfully noisy, and it was fine. In the past, but I thi- I think we're getting to the point now where it's twenty twenty three. So that that's, those would be my comments, and I welcome comments from other uh, council members.
President. Absolutely. Yeah, I I think Mayor McEachack makes a good point. Uh, we, the state, the state is. Uh, coming forward. And it basically says, starting in uh, model year twenty twenty four. Uh, the gas powered leaf blowers, lawn mowers, hedge trimmers, edges and other. Such items have to be uh, electric. Now, I don't know if that need, that ordinance is going to affect on January one, twenty twenty four. But I would suggest that Monte Sereno basically adopt the uh, the language that. Uh, simultaneously with that uh, ordinance becoming effective, Monte Sereno will also require all of them. Uh, uh, gas blower type items, appliances, all electric.
I'll I'll make a comment on that because I think what I heard from staff was saying that. The state would prohibit the sale. Of those, but not the use of those. And and right now, we pro- they, the town of Los Gatos prohibits the use. Right, even though there's sold today. So what, so what you're saying is, is why?
Because our same thing as you're saying, prohibit the use. But the effective date would be the same day as the, when the sale that state prohibits the sales. Okay?
Uh, Councilmember Turner, you have your hand raised. Go ahead, please.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to make a comment here. Um. I'm gonna say that since the state already regulates this, I don't see any reason to go beyond this. I would just follow the state's lead. So, um, those are my comments. Thank you so much.
So ju- just to clarify your your comment, Councilmember Turner, are you saying that we should? For lack of a better term, do nothing and just allow the the state regulation to take effect? And not do anything? Did I hear that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. And I see Vice Mayor Wiltshire, you've got your hand up. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, I'd like to, thank you. I'd like to make a comment of what uh, Councilmember Turner said. State regulates the sale of uh, gas powered equipment. It doesn't regulate the use of gas powered equipment. So if we don't do anything, we could be stuck with these pieces of equipment until the next century. If the gardeners keep them running, so. Doing nothing, uh, in my, in my point of view is not acceptable. Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilmember Craig.
So I agree with Councilmember Wiltshire in that we should do something now. But this is a very touchy subject. There's a lot of passionate opinions on both sides. And I, I think this would be an opportunity to utilize. Uh, some type of a polling system, maybe put a post out on Nextdoor, for example. And let's ask the residents to give us some feedback on this. Um, conversely, a mailing to people with a letter that I would encourage them to give to their gardener. So that we can start informing them what we're taking a look at, possibly get some some opinions from them. And again, make some of the programs that we've mentioned tonight. Uh, you know, ma- make sure that they know what's out there, although I'm pretty sure that they do by now, because these guys have. Have been under attack for years and years now, because. As as Mayor McEachack mentioned, um. Boy, you get one of these things in in a close quarter, man, and then you just feel like you're in a, in a. Torture chamber sometimes. Um. So, yeah, I'm trying to, trying to wrap it up and. And I I will probably just add one more thing. You know, do the old Steve Jobs, one more thing, but. I know a lot of people that have come to me and have said, why do you allow these devices, gas or electric? To be used on weekends? Because the weekend is the weekend, that's your, probably, especially on a Saturday, probably the one day. That you're going to go outside, hang out on your deck. And every single week, there's somebody coming at two o'clock in the afternoon. And it just makes it hard to have any kind of a social function at your house. Again, especially in the more densely packed neighborhoods when there's lawn care going on. Now, I wouldn't go as far as to say that personal lawn care products can't be used. But I would also put on the table if we do. Uh, conduct any type of polling that we talk about banning any commercial. Lawn uh, lawn care services in Montes Reno. Then we'll really see what that gives us. We'll, we'll, we'll really see what people think of us then, but I think this is worth asking the question since we're doing this overall.
Yeah, I, uh. Go ahead, Councilmember Turner.
Uh, yes, I I just heard something about taking a poll and taking a survey. I would like to use uh, a more reliable survey. From uh, the city rather than using the Nextdoor application. I uh, see a lot of fake accounts there, and so I would not feel comfortable using that as uh, our basis. For. Approving ordinances or not.
If it was just an example, I'll leave it up to the city to find a reliable survey method. Okay, so I think the direction the. Council is giving uh, staff is that. They're interested in seeing. An ordinance, but they'd like to have some sort of feedback through a poll. That where our residents could say if they would support something like this or not, so that we'd get a temperature read of our twelve hundred and forty parcels. How many see this as an issue or not? And then based on that, uh. We could then, staff could could determine, could come back and say this is either, you know, persuasive or not. The other thing that I heard is putting out some sort of a. Of a perhaps an email blast that we do quite well. I I would commend staff on that. Advising them of the, the rebate opportunities or whatever it is that um. Vice Mayor Wiltshire uh, identified, and that I think I heard from from you, Councilmember Craig. So, um, and then. I also heard a couple of council members saying that if we were to come back with some sort of. Of language and ordinance, that it would have an implementation date in twenty twenty four that would give. Uh. An adequate transition time that's that's. Coincidental with the state law prohibiting the sale of gas powered devices. Um, did it, did I summarize that reasonably accurately? And staff, do you have direction on that?
Yes, thank you very much.
All right. So that gets item number two out of the way. We move to item number three. Discuss and consider assigning a council member to serve as an alternate council liaison to the Better Streets Commission. Uh, do we have staff report on that?
Right here. So staff received a request from Mayor McEachack to.
Can you speak up just a little bit, please, sir?
Okay, so staff received a request from Mayor McEachack to place an item on the city council meeting agenda to discuss and consider appointing the alternate. Council liaison to the Better Streets Commission. Currently, the only council liaison assigned to the Better Streets Commission is Mayor McEachack. Previously, Councilmember Liz Lawler was of the alternate uh, council liaison, and her term as a council member ended in December uh, twenty twenty two. Staff recommends that the council discuss and. Staff recommends that the council discuss and consider assigning an alternate uh council liaison to the Better Streets Commission.
Thank you. Do we have questions of staff on the staff report? No. Uh I I have one quick question. Absolutely, go ahead. Did we not? Do we not have this position already? In other words, we never actually said who would like to have this position, correct? Correct. Interesting. Okay, so so this way. So we in responding to that as the liaison. Uh Councilmember um Lawler, she left and it was kind of dangling there. And as well, we had a transition between um Jessica Khan. And City Engineer Khan and City Engineer Wimberly. And and the Better Streets Streets Commission. Councilmember Lawler, as you as you may or may not recall, we appointed her to the Better Streets Commission and she's now chair. And in her discussions with uh City Engineer Wimberly, they're like, we need to have. A a um study session coming up, I think it's this week. And and that's what I'm like, well, wait a second, I'm not gonna be here. Where's our alternate? And we don't have an alternate, so that's why I said, gee, we need to have an alternate. And uh that's kind of how we got there. Yeah, it's it's interesting. I didn't know we had a council liaison for that. Oh, we cre- we created that position last year or two years ago. Well, because it's also not listed in here in our thing at the end of the. Well, are we? Do we need to take public comment first? Yeah, sure, sure. Let's let's just open it up for public comment. If you're a member of the public, please raise your virtual hand. We have, we have the uh. Uh Chair of the Better Streets Commission, uh Chair Lawler, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. As the former council alternate liaison to the Better Streets Commission and current Chair of said commission. I thank you for making this appointment. As you recall, it was almost exactly a year ago that we appointed liaisons to begin with. And as the Better Streets Commission has been in existence for five years, I believe connecting with council via liaison will be helpful to both council and the commission. And facilitating communication and ensuring clarity of expectations and budgetary considerations. The Better Streets Commission is currently working on finalizing the and updating the Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan. And we will be having a study session this Thursday, March ninth at seven P M. And it is our hope that the new uh alternate liaison will be able to attend. Thank you.
Thank you, um Chair Lawler. Uh do we have other? If there's another member of the pub- public that would wish to make comment, please raise your virtual hand. No other hands raised, all closed, public comment and bring it back to council. Uh Councilmember Craig, go ahead. Well, this has always been a passion of mine in the city, which is traffic. And that was one of the reasons that I I pushed hard to get the better streets and. I forget what we initially called it, but uh I'm glad it's morphed and it's really doing a great job. And if nobody else is interested in taking on this position, I would volunteer to do so. Okay, um go ahead. Go ahead, Vice Mayor Wolchimer.
Um, yeah, I I agree. This is a very important commission. Um. I had planned to volunteer for the commission for for the position also. But I will gladly yield to uh Councilmember Craig.
Are you sure? If you really want it?
Well, that's arm wrestle, okay.
Okay, I I got my hand on the microphone. So so can you attend the meeting this Thursday? What time is it? So it'd be close. I'm doing your V T A meeting on Thursday. Oh, yeah. Avery, I think it's yours. Can you attend the meeting on Thursday? Wait a minute, he's he's in quarantine.
Yes.
Oh, you're in quarantine, so we is with that meeting, would he be able to attend via Zoom?
Um City Attorney, this would apply to um. Our commissioners as well, correct?
Uh yes, yes, the Brown Act provisions apply to the commissioners as well, so they could also attend uh remotely.
Yes, so he can.
So so he could, he could. Okay, yeah, I just in case. Do I hear nomination? I nominate Councilmember Wolchimer to be the alternate council liaison for the Better Streets and Roads Commission. Uh does he? Does Vice Mayor Wolchimer accept the nomination?
Uh, yes, I will accept the nomination if Councilmember Craig is absolutely sure.
I'm sure.
All right, thank you.
All right, uh so we have to take action on this. Are there any other nominations? Oh, we need a second. We've got a second. We've got a motion, a second. We've got a nomination, a second. And uh any other nominations? Hearing none, I'm gonna close the nominations and bring it back for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Councilmember Alani?
Yes.
Mayor, Vice Mayor Wolchimer?
I abstain because I don't want to vote for myself.
Mayor Meckich.
It's gonna be close, but I'll vote uh in favor, so it's four uh zero one. Motion carries, nomination carries. Congratulations and thank you very much. I think that the Better Streets Commission is is very important for our city. And I think having people volunteer to help on that and have a council liaison is very important. So uh thank you very much. With that. Uh we move on to committee commission reports. And I know it's ten o'clock and we've got a number of items listed here. If we could just uh. Go through them uh briefly, uh start and we'll just go down the list. Uh Councilmember Craig, go ahead. No reports. So you are attending the V T A. I will be attending the V T A meeting on Thursday. Thank you. Uh Councilmember Alahi.
The City Association, I attended the meeting on February ninth. And we had a discussion on uh prioritizing issues that the city's associations considered. They also appointed, uh you know, they also nominated somebody to be their staff attorney. Since the president attorney is leaving. Uh it hasn't been finalized yet. There was a question on the agreement where uh. The attorney that was proposed uh didn't have an indemnity clause in their city association, but like. If the attorney who presented the city commits malpractice or whatever, they shouldn't be able to indemnify the association. So that was a discussion going on. Uh there's all some priorities were established, associations to what to focus on. And one of the priorities that I was pushing was to establish a committee that looks into this whole housing element issue. And and maybe comes up with a way of uh. Changing the. Uh where people can, different citizens uh coordinate with each other uh to elevate the housing element. So that it's not specifically city limited, but it can be looked at on a countywide basis, so it is helping too. Those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Uh Councilmember Turner, go ahead, please.
Uh yes, I just wanted to talk a little bit about West Valley Sanitation District. This is a very important year for us. Obviously, I can't talk about uh. Details of a closed session. However, we're going into a litigation with um. The city of San Jose and the city of Santa Clara and uh. And with that, we have four new board directors on the council, on on the committee. And so we are basically going back to square one, teaching them. Exactly what we need to do to be able to win this lawsuit. That's basically it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh Vice Mayor Wolchimer, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um no meetings from the commissions that that I'm on. However, the next meeting of Silicon Valley Alamo Control is March twenty second. The next meeting of Santa Clara Valley Water Commission is on April twelfth. This is for uh your records. Thank you.
Okay, um. So I'll go through my list, the city selection committee. There's nothing I've reported on that previously. A V T A is this week and I'm not able to attend and. Councilmember Craig is gonna attend on my behalf. Uh West Valley Clean Water Board, where our next meeting is in May. Uh so I have nothing new to report there. Uh same with West Valley Solid Waste Recycling J P A. That'll need immediately after the or immediately after the clean water. Silicon Valley Clean Energy, uh we have a board meeting tomorrow um evening. Uh that meets once a month. So I think I've reported on what happened with that recently. Then the other item that's a new item is uh the mayor's roundtable. And the mayor's roundtable, something new in Santa Clara County, Mayor Matt Mahan of San Jose. Uh invited the other fourteen mayors to his office last Friday. And I was uh honored to be there, sitting at the table with. Twelve other mayors, one mayor attended remotely and two mayors were absent. Um and basically, he went around the table and said, what are your issues? Do an introduction, whatnot. And it's interesting and not a surprise that virtually every single person mentioned the housing and all that. So the perspectives were very interesting because um the mayor of. Gilroy, uh she said that, and that's uh. Hmm Maria Blanke, I think her name is. Anyways, uh. She said, you know, if in Gilroy, we've got land, we'd like to have more housing. But there's no jobs there, there's no transit. So all the jobs are in North County, they can't get anyone to do any development. You know, which is, which was, I thought that was interesting, um and unfortunate. And other, there were some other comments made, but um. Uh it's gonna be a quarterly meeting, so I thought that was a good one. And the 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 value proposition was. That the city of San Jose actually pays for someone to represent them. Uh in Sacramento and also uh in D C. And Mayor Mahan said, if there's fifteen signatures on a letter. It's much more compelling than just my signature. And he said, you know, we've we've got to work together on that, so. Um I wanted to just bring that to everyone's attention and and so. Whoever the mayor is in Monteserino next year, um will have that item to be added to their uh list of. Responsibilities. That is my report. With that, we've gone through the committee and commission reports. And if we could now go to uh. Councilmember comments before we go to the city manager reported, before we go to future agenda items. Comments by council members.
I I don't have any.
Nothing. Okay, I understand. We we I thought the timing was almost perfect on that. That you just came in and sat down right as we were having roll call. That was good. So with that, any other comments? No comments by council members? Uh city manager, uh your report, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mayor Meckich. Um I just wanted to let the public and council know. We are having our annual picnic, August twenty seventh. We made the reservation. That would be Sunday, the last Sunday in August, eleven thirty to two P M. And we'll be sending out postcards for that. We look forward to that date every single year. And this Saturday is Little League opening day. Our resident, longtime Monastirina resident Phil Knopf is. Uh kind of in charge of inviting and I think we are all welcome. I was planning to attend Saturday at eight A M. When they do kind of the parade of all the Little Leaguers, they throw out the first pitch, they sing the National Anthem. It's a feel-good event. I'm not sure if it will be raining. But um if there are any council members that wish to attend, please let me know and I'll let Mr. Knopf know and they will call out your name. For your attendance. It is at the field behind Blossomville School.
Baggerly, I believe. Yep.
There's Baggerly in the falls. Yes, that's Baggerly.
Vice Mayor Wolchimer, are you able to attend that? Well. Oh, yes, yes, you're you're still under quarantine. Um we would have another council member could attend on my behalf, since I'll be traveling internationally, that would be great.
What is it?
Saturday morning at eight A M. And I'm not sure if it's raining or not, but I will be there.
Okay, I'll let you know. There there may be a no at eight bagel in my Saturday morning future.
Councilmember Turner, you're also welcome.
I, anything else on your report?
That is it for tonight.
Okay, so now let's move to future agenda items. And I think we've got a couple items, do we not? Uh and I'll start, I'll start with the uh city manager, Leonard.
For future items. Oh, yes. So we do have the annual strategic goals session and I am. Trying to get that planned for Saturday. I believe it is March thirty, no, April first. Apologize, it is a March thirty first, but April first. If it is all right with the council, we would like to invite you here on a Saturday. And it would be about nine thirty in the morning, perhaps no later than noon. Our annual goal-setting session, very important. So we do this prior to our budget every year and get those items budgeted and presented to council during budget time, so we can complete those tasks. In the coming uh what we call fiscal year and we will take your orders for. What we call maybe a continental breakfast. If you have any special needs, let me know. But I'm hoping I'll do a poll for the council right now. Send me via email your availability, Saturday, April first, nine thirty in the morning. I'm hoping you will all attend.
Okay, um so I'll make a comment on that. Um I I think it is. Something that that it would be good next year and I hope you're listening to this, Vice Mayor Wolchimer. To schedule this perhaps in January or early February. Um but on April first, if we could uh all attend, that would be great and. I think it would be good to come back on the twenty first with kind of a. And an outline of what that morning would look like. Um so that we all are prepared and um it is a Saturday morning, so.
It's also your food food steak, so.
It's also the day that the end of Flea March two. Other uh future agenda items, uh. No, we're good, we're good. Well, with that, oh, I'm sorry, uh Councilmember Turner, go ahead, please.
Yes, I would like to uh agendize the N I C P for Monteserino. Um at the last meeting, you uh the mayor stated that that's not gonna be part of the community center. Uh so I'd like to know when we can actually start that that um project. Thank you.
Okay, so let me understand what the future agenda item is. You you what what would you like, Councilmember Turner?
I would like to. I would like to figure out if the N I C P is still part of. Our agenda to move forward, our project to move forward. It was scheduled for December, um, and obviously we're past December, so I'd like to agendize it just to get clarity around it.
And can I ask, what is N I C P?
So N I C P is a shed that cert uses.
What 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 does the acronym stand for, please? Oh, so it's a local.
National Incident Command Post. And what it is, it's it for Montesereno, it's a shed that's ten by ten. And the emergency preparedness volunteers, when we are called for duty. Go to the N I C P to get our equipment. And we would, we have, we would have the keys to the N I C P, we would prefer not to go. To City Hall, because nobody will be manning City Hall at at that time, and we. You know, we we will be a a volunteer force for the neighborhood for Montesereno. We do not have, we have one N I C P, which is on Dave's Avenue by the school. And we need one on this side of of Montesereno, close to City Hall and Twin Creeks and the uh Kido area.
Okay, so I'm hearing you want to have a report on that, and what's your timeline? For that, or what's your preferred timeline subject to staff uh workload and availability?
Well, as soon as possible, because this was supposed to be installed in December. And we're we're nearing um the the fire season. And so this would be helpful to have an N I C P for Montesereno. So we can, we can work from Montesereno rather than having to go to the N I C P in Los Gadas. Los Gadas has seven or eight N I C Ps and Montesereno has one. So I would like to get that um clarity to see if if we're still moving forward with that or not.
Yeah, so so I guess we can really discuss the issue before, but. Yeah, the the city manager, Leonard, is can probably look at his calendar and. Put it on schedule so we can address it, okay? Hopefully, we'll get all the details on who's involved and what the costs are gonna be and. Uh, what the benefits are gonna be.
The cost of the N I C P is twelve thousand dollars, that includes the hammerade inside, the helmets and everything else. Was that the question? I can I can barely hear you.
Yeah, also, Turner, and I I I was trying to avoid getting into a discussion because there would be a brown brown neck issue, since it's not on an agenda. And I'm uh I'm following up with the suggestion that the city manager and others. Put it on the agenda so we can get a hold of.
On a future agenda.
On a future, yeah.
Yes.
Great. Anything else on future agenda items? No, with that, since you're, everyone's on their edge of their feet, I will adjourn the meeting at ten seventeen.